Commissioner Graham.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks. Commissioner Unseld.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale. Commissioner Volker.
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Warren.
Yes, ma'am. You have the minutes from our December the second meeting in your packet. Are there any questions? If not, I would call for a motion.
Commissioner Volker. Commissioner Drain. Commissioner Graham.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unseld.
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Warren.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much.
Mr. Warren, I request that you order the record include all relevant statutory and regulatory provisions, the commission's entire file for each application, and the qualifications of each staff witness. I also request that you administer the oath to each of those witnesses.
Y'all swear to tell the truth?
Yes.
Thank you very much. You have the subdivision, site development plans also in your, in our packets. Are there any questions? Hearing none, they will stand as submitted. We have no old business. Our first public hearing tonight is 2021 68Z County Barry Woosley and Big Reedy Enterprises LLC have filed an application to rezone tracts of land containing approximately 84.113 acres located Zero Diford Road, abutting Upton Road, and across from Collet Road, from Ag to RE Residential Estate to RS1A, single-family residential with a general development plan. Mr. Jones?
Chair Warren, we had a pre-app on October 13th of the property you see outlined in yellow. Again, that is a rezoning for 84.113 acres at Zero Diford Road, from Ag and RE to RS1A, single-family residential, to develop 205 single-family residential lots within the development. The existing zoning, Ag, you can see that very, very small portion of RE to the northwest corner of the map there. The existing land use is agriculture, and the future land use map is low-density residential, which is seen as a potentially compatible zoning designation with the proposed RS1, RS1A zone tonight. And the proposed density for this development is 2.44 dwelling units per acre. Flipping on to page two, you'll see the considerations for the low-density residential future land use map category. Under the site characteristics review, we've got several things, but I'll note a couple of them. Under transportation infrastructure, you will note that Diford, Diford, Diford Road is 16 feet in pavement width, and Upton Road is 11 feet in pavement width. But that when a connection to Upton Road is made, there were considerations in the development plan conditions that we'll get to, to widen Upton Road specifically. Under fire protection as well, the properties are served by the Alvin Volunteer Fire Department, and the applicants did make considerations in DPC number nine to coordinate hydrant placement with the Alvin Volunteer Fire Department. Looking on down, under site design and compatibility review, we will note on the next page, under building orientation, that staff suggested that the homes be oriented to face Diford Road. If the homes are oriented to face internal streets, side or rear-facing facade should be screened from view from Diford, and the applicants agreed to a 10-foot landscape buffer with more detailed considerations that I outline when we get to DPC number six, but they did agree to considerations there. And then under proposed open space, the applicants agreed to a 1.47-acre open space and sidewalks in DPC number 11. And then down under connectivity, I will note too that stub streets, and you can see kind of in the concept here, they are generally required for tracks, adjoining tracks of 10 acres or greater. However, that was waived for the adjoining track to the southeast that is predominantly designated as floodplain, and that is why there is not one to that tract. The requirement is also waived for lot four, as shown on the concept plan, and that is more detailed in the DPCs as well, which we'll go over in a moment. And then finally, under pedestrian, bicycle, and transit facilities, the applicants agreed in DPC number eight that sidewalks would be on both sides of interior streets. Looking down at the area-specific policy review, I will note several things from the Scottsville Corridor Study, of which is just on the edge, but it is inside that boundary. The applicable policies and recommendations are as follows. Number one is that a requirement that all new residential developments be served by internal streets, and the applicants satiated that requirement in DPC number five. And this proposal does comply with that recommendation. Number two, that building material requirement for both residential and non-residential development for facades facing Scottsville Road, in parentheses, possibly all roadways. I'm not going to read the whole blurb under there, because I'm about to go over it in DPC number three, but the applicants did address that, and the planning commission should determine if that satisfies that specific policy. And then lastly, number three, an open space, green space, or greenways connection for the new development. And the applicants agreed in DPC number 11 to the extra 1.47 acres of open space and sidewalks. And in those sidewalks being on both sides of the street, there are no greenways in the area for it to connect to. So the planning commission should determine compliance with this recommendation, meaning out of the Scottsville Corridor Study, one in compliance, and then two up to your all's determination. And then moving on down to the general development plan, development plan conditions. Number one deals with utility location, that they shall be underground. The second development plan condition, limiting the property to 205 single-family dwelling units. Number three has to do with the exteriors, and I'm just going to read this whole thing. You guys slow me down if you have questions, but exteriors of all residences shall consist of brick, stone, drive-it, cement-based siding, engineered wood siding, stone, man-made stone, or other modern masonry material. Vinyl shall be permitted only on soffits and the undersides of porches. Brick, stone, or mammoth stone shall extend a grade for residences constructed with siding materials. Concrete block shall not be permitted as a visible facade material. Auxiliary structures shall be constructed of the same material as the principal residential structure. Any head walls at driveways shall be constructed of stone or brick. Each residence shall have an attached side-facing or rear-facing two-car garage. Each residence shall have a minimum of 1,800 square feet of heated and cooled living space exclusive of garages and porches. And each residence shall have a minimum first floor of 1,200 square feet. All driveways shall be constructed of concrete. Development plan condition number four, the property will be developed with uniformed street lighting. Number five deals with access to the property in that it shall be limited to an internal street connecting with Diford Road and an internal street connecting with Upton Road. Access to Diford Road shall be located at the intersection of Diford and Collet Road, which intersection shall be developed as a four-way stop condition in accordance with specifications required by Warren County Public Works. When the internal street connection is made to Upton Road, Upton Road shall be widened to 18 feet in accordance with the specifications of Warren County Public Works, and the property will be developed with stub streets to any adjacent parcel, which is 10 acres or larger, except the adjacent parcel owned by the Warren County Board of Education. And that is that lot four that I mentioned a moment ago. Number six deals with orientation and screening. Homes with side or rear facades oriented towards Diford Road shall be screened from Diford Road with a 10-foot landscape buffer consisting of at least six evergreens and three deciduous trees per 100 linear feet. Each residential lot shall be developed with at least two hardwood trees with a caliper of at least two inches. And that healthy trees within 10 feet of the exterior perimeter of property lines with a caliper of at least 10 inches shall not be removed, which requirement shall not apply to any currently existing or subsequently created property lines in the interior of the development. Number seven deals with plot restrictions and restrictive covenants that will be recorded, and that they, the covenant shall provide for mandatory membership in homeowner's association and for ownership of all common areas by that homeowner's association. Number eight deals with sidewalks and requiring them on both sides of interior streets. Number nine deals with the fire hydrant placement I mentioned a moment ago. Ten deals with considerations for sinkhole mitigation in accordance with the requirements by Warren County Public Works Stormwater Management. And number 11 is again that the property will be developed with at least that 1.47 acres of open space and sidewalks. Moving on to the next page, you'll see the considerations for the traffic impact study. I'm not going to read exactly what Warren County Public Works required, because the applicants did agree to all of that in DPC number five. I will mention that KYTC did not require any improvements. Looking at the Focus 2030 category review, you've got 16 total items, six of which comply, 10 of which are up to the planning commission. And I will note that the proposal may comply with LU 2 and 2.1. If the planning commission determines the proposal is a high-quality development that includes design standards tailored to protect the character of the area, the planning commission should determine in accordance with LU 2.1.1 if the agreed extra open space and sidewalks are, if they comply with that policy. The planning commission should determine if the applicants have addressed LU 2.1.4, PR 1.7, and NCR 1.1.6, and if the applicant's considerations in the preservation of the existing mature trees and vegetation is appropriate. And the planning commission should determine compliance with LU 2.8 if the application complies with the recommendations of the Scottsville Corridor Study. And finally, the planning commission should determine the ones with HN 2.1 and HN 4, and if the planning commission determines that the location of the planned development is suitable for the proposed housing type, and if it will enhance the array of housing options in the area. Flipping back to page one, we will wrap it all up with our points to consider. The proposed RS1A zone and density comply with the low-density residential flume category. The proposed development complies with the majority of the site characteristics review criteria, with exceptions noted regarding road widths for Diford and Upton Road. The proposed general development plan complies with the majority of the review criteria for site design and meets the minimum requirements of the zoning ordinance. And lastly, that compatibility should be determined by the planning commission. That's all I've got for the staff report, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Zach. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Jones?
So Zach, I see that we have, we have a number of people here in the audience, and sometimes we, as commissioners, we talk about things here that others might not be familiar with or understand. So if you'll indulge me just for a moment, very briefly, would you, you or someone on the staff, tell us what is the future land use map and what is its purpose?
Future land use map is an element of our comprehensive plan, which is the guiding document that leads to all of our regulations and the, it's the overall plan for the community. Specifically here, the future land use map is a guide or a tool to help the planning commission determine whether a proposed development satisfies the anticipated land use through the year 2030, which is when our comprehensive plan runs through.
And I want you to correct me if I'm wrong, so if I live in this area, I could reasonably expect that if something says low-density residential, that it's going to be developed probably for low-density residential. Would that be an accurate statement?
The future land use map is one element of the comprehensive plan, but generally speaking, that is correct.
So it's meant to be a guidance tool?
Yes.
For, for, for the neighborhood and for, for us to use as we determine what is an appropriate development. Is that accurate?
Correct.
Okay. And so if it says low-density residential, and it didn't have any sewer, what size would the lots be?
Minimum on septic that you can have in Warren County is an acre.
Same, same map. If it has sewer, does it change?
Yes, the minimum lot size you can have sewered in low-density would be, or excuse me, well, the minimum lot size you could have is 5,000 square feet, which would be RS1D for single-family. And then the maximum, the maximum minimum, if that makes any sense, would be 12,000 square feet in RS1A.
So, so if, if, if a development happened in this area using this future land use map prior to sewer arriving, would those lots have a higher or a lower density?
Say that one more time.
If, if, if something developed here prior to sewer, and then sewer later arrived, would we have some lots that have one acre? And would we also start to see lots that have a higher density after sewer arrives, under the same future land use map?
It could be possible under the same future land use map designation. You can still develop lots on sewer that are an acre in size or greater, but you just can't go less than that without it.
Would staff like to add anything to that?
Well, I'll just simply add that the, again, the future land use map is a general guide of what may be developed there, and then the compatibility tests that we have, that two, three, and four, if you will, then determine compatibility of that. So the future land use map would indicate that low-density housing is appropriate here, but what form that comes in is, is what question. So that includes the density, the lot sizes, and those things. I think we're maybe getting, crossing up the future land use map with our zoning regulations a little bit there, and they're, they're not exactly the same thing.
And I appreciate the clarification there. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Commissioners, any other questions for Zach? Okay, thank you, Zach. Is the applicant here or their representative that would like to add to this?
Yes, Mr. Warren, my name's Kevin Brooks.
Swear to tell the truth?
Your address?
1649 Chestnut Street.
Thank you.
I do not have a lot to add. A little unusually, I'm going to invite Zach or Ms. Hurt to consider a little amendment to our DPCs. DPC number 11, when I initially submitted it, Ms. Hurt pointed out that I had drafted it very poorly, and, and so I, I changed it. We sort of came to, we all knew what we were trying to do. So I changed it to be, I thought, to be clear, we thought, and then my own client read it differently. So I just, I want to clarify, and the point here is that we have 1.47 acres of open space, and our calculation of open space includes sidewalks. So we don't want it to be that there's 1.47 acres of open space and sidewalks. So I'm not really sure, but maybe we should use the word including. Y'all, is that okay with everybody?
Instead of the word and?
Instead of and?
To say, including sidewalks?
I know, I know we would all remember, but some of us won't be here forever, so, okay?
Oh, Ben has a side question.
All right.
I, I guess for the purposes of this application, they want to propose that within the development, at least 1.47 acres will either be open space, land, area, or sidewalks. That, that, that's what you're asking for, right?
That's what we mean, yes. That's what we mean. And we have on our plan, I think, what is it, 0.55-acre label as open space? And so we're just trying to avoid confusion that our 1.47 is 0.55 plus, that difference is sidewalks. So.
The other option, it would still serve the same purpose if you just changed the open space to match graphically what is shown, because I think you have also agreed to provide sidewalks on both sides of the street.
So we can change it to?
So that may make it even less confusing.
We can change it to 0.55, change 1.47 to 0.55.
And strike sidewalks altogether in number 11.
Because we have committed to do sidewalks.
Number 11 will now read, the property will be developed with at least 0.55 acres of open space.
Yep. So I do not have a whole lot to add, Mr. Warren. I guess I would just say, following up a little bit on this dialogue with, with Mr. Graham about the, the flume and so forth, we are, of course, compliant with the flume. We are doing low-density residential, but we could have asked for RS1D 5,000-square-foot lots, or C or B, but we asked for the biggest in that chain of lots. We asked for RS1A. And, and we do have high-quality building materials. You all are used to seeing things like 80% or whatever, and you don't see that here. It's not 80%. It's all, the entire home must be those high-quality building materials. And so we think this is, will be a handsome development, and we hope you'll approve it.
So, Kevin, if I may, I just want to clarify, make sure I understand the, the DPCs. So there's no vinyl in this development at all, other than soffits, is that correct?
That's right.
And exteriors are going to be brick, drive-it, other modern masonry materials to include cement siding or engineered wood siding, like some of those similar products, correct?
Yes.
And all driveways will be concrete, correct? Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Commissioners, any other questions for Mr. Brooks? Thank you, Kevin. We have a lot of people here tonight, and we would, is anybody in opposition tonight or have questions? And we're, everybody has three minutes. We are, you're here, it's the Citizens Review Board. So if you have questions, and you would like to come to the microphone, we will swear you in. Would you state your name and address, please, sir?
Lloyd Kemp, 925 Diford Road.
Mr. Kemp, can you tell the truth?
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. Just one question, well, a couple of questions. Of course, our, front of our house will be facing the back of these houses on this first street. And of course, we, we have told, there's, there's a berm and a tree line. And I couldn't, I couldn't understand the spacing of these trees, the footage, how much spacing would be between these trees along that. If somebody could tell me, I'd appreciate it.
Mr. Would it, would it help to pull the map up so we can point to where Mr. Kemp's house is, and we can make, make sure we've got our orientation?
I was just finding their property.
925 Diford Road.
And I think we have the pointer somewhere. Okay. Zach, it's on the zone change survey. Slot right here. I think, yeah.
While we're doing that, can I ask a question of staff before we address Mr. Kemp? So is Mr. Kemp's first assessment correct in that these homes do not face Diford? They're going to be oriented differently? They're going to be the back of the houses?
Correct. There's no requirement that they have front facades oriented toward Diford. So to answer the question about the tree spacing and their development plan conditions, they've committed that any home with a side or rear-facing facade that is oriented toward Diford Road, it shall be screened with a 10-foot landscape buffer, meaning the buffer on, on the ground would be 10 feet wide. And then within that buffer, at least six evergreen trees and three deciduous trees would be planted per 100 linear feet along Diford Road.
So, Mr. Kemp, another way to describe that is when they're first planted, of course, you could see probably through those, but they're spaced appropriately so that as they mature, they close up that space as, as the trees get larger.
Just, I just want to be looking at anybody's, you know, patio furniture or gas grill, you know, out my front, my front yard, so. The second question is the, the volume of traffic. Of course, it's going to intersect with Collet Road. Collet Road is only 14-foot. And right now, there's a high volume of traffic. It travels Collet Road to Plano Road. And this, this development is going to throw more traffic on Collet Road. And you're going to widen Upton Road 18-foot, and Upton Road's only 14-foot. You know, that's going to be a big, big problem. If you, if you have 205 lots, and average, average homeowner has two vehicles, that's over 400 vehicles per day. That's going to be traveling Diford Road, Collet Road, and that's just our concern. Because right now, Collet Road is not wide enough. It's only 14-foot. Diford Road, 16-foot, and you're going to make Upton Road 18-foot. That just, to me, that's not common sense.
So I'll add this. This body relies on that traffic study. And so we, we're not traffic experts by any means. And so that's one of the reasons that we have that information before us. Those are traffic engineers. We trust that they know what they're doing when they, when they tell us these things. And so I, I'm not sure that I can alleviate your concern, but I can tell you that we, we do rely on that traffic impact study when we, when we make these decisions.
I think, I appreciate your time, but I think it needs to be addressed. Definitely.
We'll note, Commissioner Graham, that there was no traffic study for this development. It was waived due to the, in lieu of the following improvements being agreed to, that Warren County Public Works anticipated that those would be the improvements. And so they just had the applicants go ahead and, and agree to them.
See, okay. So, so I misspoke there. The, so Public Works dictated the improvements, is that correct? Okay. And so once they agreed to those improvements, then there was no need for a traffic impact study? Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kemp. Anybody else that has a question regarding this proposal? Name and address, please, sir.
Steve Wheeler, 1370 Diford Road.
Wheeler's, do you swear to tell the truth?
Pardon me?
You swear to tell the truth?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate the opportunity to be with y'all tonight. We own, my wife and I own a farm adjoining this property. Little history lesson. It's been in my wife's family for about 125 years. And my son's with me tonight to speak also. And that original farm goes back to the Kirbys. And most of the descendants of the Kirbys in this area, their founding ancestry was located on that farm. We recently acquired a portion of the Upton Farm that adjoins our farm, Section 7. And with that, our parcel's about 200 acres with quite a common boundary with the property that y'all are looking at tonight. And so there are a couple of concerns. I would have not had the opportunity to talk directly to Mr. Woosley, and probably this would have been better discussed with him before the meeting. But we tried to have a couple of meetings. It just didn't work out. And I appreciate this young man. He talked for 15 minutes, and I didn't understand a word he said. Mr. Graham, I appreciate your comment. It made me feel not quite so stupid.
For the record, I struggle with it occasionally myself.
But a couple of concerns, and like I said, I haven't had the opportunity to express those to Mr. Woosley, and I apologize doing it publicly. One would be, I'm going to call it trespass, but that's kind of a harsh word. But that many families, that many people, their ability to move on to our property, I have a safety concern. Yes, it's a personal concern about them coming on to the property, but truly a concern about their safety and welfare. Children, pets, even parents. This is a very picturesque area. And there's a large wooded area, of which most of that's going to belong to us. And it would be a great place to take a stroll, enjoy, you know, the property. And it would be a great place to take a stroll, enjoy, you know, the property. But it is a creek bluff, so the topography is very steep, woods with tree limbs, dead trees, really a safety hazard for pets and people. And so, I am very concerned about limiting people walking from their homes and over into that farm area. And I was going to propose to Mr. Woosley, and I don't know what kind of input that you guys can have, some sort of commercial-grade chain-link fencing that would be a perimeter fence separating his property from our farm. And so, wanted to talk with him about that. The second concern would be water retention. You know, a lot of roofs, a lot of roads, a lot of sidewalks, and how much water is going to be pouring off this property on to our property. And then, a third concern would be aesthetics. The reason we're out there, and a main reason we've been out there, is it is pastoral. The view is great. And so, what Mr. Woosley's describing sounds like a nice development, but still, it's not... It's city, and we came out to be in the county. And so, if there are some things that can be done, vegetation, plantings, that would screen that property from Die Ford Road to our tree line, you know, that would be something that we would be interested in. So, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you. Brad Wheeler, my son is with me tonight, and he's going to clean up the mess I made, so... But I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler. Brad, we have three minutes, and we've talked about traffic, and trespassing, and safety, and the potential creek line, potential fencing, the aesthetics, and water retention. And the development of any, as most of us know, the development of any property, the property owners have to contain their own water. They cannot push water with their engineering firm, cannot push water on anybody else. So, three minutes, sir.
Brad Wheeler, 189 Hunter's Crossing Way.
Do you swear to truth?
I promise to tell the truth.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler.
Absolutely. I appreciate y'all's time today, and appreciate what y'all do for the city. I have had the opportunity to meet with Mr. Woosley, and we spent some time looking at his property, looking at our property, so I have spent some time with him working through some of those concerns that we had. We are concerned very much, and I speak on behalf of my brother and myself, as obviously the future beneficiaries of farm that's been in the family for a very long time. There are rivers, ponds, caves, sinkholes, springs, fences, dangerous wildlife, and buildings on the adjoining 150 acres. So, there's a lot of trouble that people can get into very quickly with Drake's Creek and the springs, the rivers, the caves in that area. So, we certainly are concerned about that from a safety perspective, and certainly from a liability perspective. Second issue we do have is I have, is runoff, concerned about the runoff issues associated with the development. And so, I know that part of the plans are to develop some of that and deal with some of those runoff issues. Concerned not only with the amount of runoff, but the volume flow of that runoff, so that it's contained properly and not...
Mr. Wheeler, the water will be contained to the property, and that is part of the plan. It has to be done with the engineering. So, really, water is not an issue that we will take up under consideration, because it is something that has to be contained by the owner.
Is it contained... If there's certain runoff that already comes on, and we expect some of that, so I'm assuming...
There'll be no additional runoff?
No additional runoff.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right.
And I have one last thing to what Christian just said. At this stage, we have not done the final engineering.
No engineering, yeah.
Correct. So, as you look at any proposal, it might show some retention, but the retention, the real retention basin may not even be in the same place it's shown here.
That's right.
But you can trust that if this application goes past this stage, that it's going to go through a very rigorous engineering process, and all of that water will be captured in those retention basins. Now, clearly, as it has to go somewhere over some period of time, but it's a very slow release of that water.
Right, slow release. And that's would be our concerns, the slower release of that water versus...
Sediment, same thing. So, even during construction, they will have to put in silt fences to capture any runoff from, as they expose the property, as they expose the dirt, if you will. Before that happens, the silt fences have to go in to catch any sediment as well.
The other thing that we would... We're planning on trying to build on Lot Number 7, so that's what we...
Can we point to that, so I can get oriented?
Yeah. That's this lot here.
Okay, all right.
And of course, let me make mention about water runoff and retention real quick. The ridge line, from top of ridge line to bottom ridge line, is about 140-feet height. So, that's certainly a very important concern for us. But we're planning on developing Lot 7, just as a single-family residence, and holding for investment purposes long-term, maybe for my child, my son. That property line between Lot 7 and Lot 6 certainly could use some barrier trees, something in that backyard section, just on that property line. We certainly would appreciate a little bit barrier there also. And possibly a consideration to make maybe the lots on that single line a little larger, not so concerned about what would happen inside the property. So, if there's a larger number internally, maybe work into a larger lot size, maybe to the edge. We certainly would entertain that, and that's fewer people along the property line that may trespass over onto our space, so. But we don't... We know that this property was purchased for investment, for development. We realize the use maps of Warren County, and we certainly don't oppose the development. And we just have some considerations and some concerns associated with it, and realize it was purchased for investment and for this reason, so, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else in the audience have a question or a comment regarding this that we've not Commissioners, you've heard the concerns or the issues raised by the adjoining property owners. Is there anything you would like to add? Mr. Brooks, would you come back to the microphone, please?
So, Kevin, we've heard some concerns about...
South property line.
About that property line, and possibly a fence.
Yes, thank you. That's the property line we're talking about, right there, right?
Right.
Okay.
And I assume that Steve Wheeler and Brad Wheeler... So, let's clarify something here. I see a hand back there.
Probably mine goes that distance and all the way through. Yeah. It goes northeast also. Mark, laser marker on the floor about, but it extends out.
Come up here and take the pointer and show it to us. I'm totally confused.
Because you own the property to the right of that yellow line? Yes.
Yeah, gotcha. Yeah, and that's all heavily wooded?
Heavily wooded.
Yeah.
That's the ridge line.
Got it.
It's about 100, 600 feet, goes down to 848, somewhere in that range. It's pretty good, right?
So, Kevin, some would make the argument that geography creates, or topography creates a barrier there. Mr. Wheeler has expressed a concern of partially for safety. And so, I think the... Yeah. So, clearly, for the entire, I guess for the entire boundary, we don't have some topography that's going to create a boundary. Is there anything we can do to mitigate that in the form of a fence?
Well, I will... I need to consult with my client a little bit, but I'll just guess that we won't like the idea of a chain-link fence. And I think you all appreciate the nature of the development we're doing.
I would agree with that, but if it's some type of barrier, let's have that discussion.
And are you talking about, and I will just say, that the area that runs roughly north-south or top-to-bottom, which is kind of along the ridge line, is a... That would be an unusual place to put a fence.
I would agree. There's... Topography should create a barrier, you know, from a safety perspective. I'm not sure there's much we can do if someone does go, decide to go there, if you will. But for the other areas, let's see what we can do to address that.
Oh, and I will... Anyone take along? We'll chat about that real quick. And I guess I just want to ask, maybe, is that it? I hope, is that it? Or do you have... If there are other things we need to talk about, then I might as well talk to them. Okay, give me a second.
Kevin, before we begin, it's been drawn to my attention that I missed something here, so I want to... I'm going to backtrack on what I just asked you for. The fence, and then, the thing that I missed is, could we do something, some kind of vegetation along that... I don't have a pointer here, but along that property line that separates Brad Wheeler, the future property that he was quit, I'm sorry.
I thought the same one we were just talking about, so I'm confused again. Let's back up here. Let's let Rachel go over what the development plan condition currently calls out for the 10-foot landscape.
We've probably already addressed it, haven't we?
I don't know.
Well, it's part of it. So, Development Plan Condition number... Let me find it here. Six. Kind of the second half of Development Plan Condition 6 says that healthy trees existing within 10 feet of exterior perimeter property lines, and with a caliper of at least 10 inches, shall not be removed. So, that would include the southern boundary, so anything that's there now, so kind of right in here where there are existing trees, they're already required to keep anything within 10 feet of the property line with that 10-inch caliper. So, part of that boundary already has a requirement for vegetation.
And then, so Kevin, was the remain... Was that boundary also the boundary that you understood we were addressing?
Really, just very generally, where the vegetation starts and the line continues is where I thought we were being asked to put a fence.
That's correct.
It's where I'm... Well, they were asking us to put a fence all the way, but... So, we're prepared to do a fence from that point.
So that we could get in the DPCs, let's kind of visually point to it, and then we will let Hamp wordsmith that to make sure everybody understands.
But, ah, I see it. Turn it over. Okay. So, we will commit to a wood or vinyl fence from the... From where the wooded area ends to that point. And we've already, as you pointed out, committed to basically leave the significant vegetation there. And the other, catch me if I'm wrong...
Like, but fence are you proposing, Kevin?
Oh, wood or vinyl is as far as we got. Wood or vinyl, but not chain-link was as far as we got.
So, what would we typically do? Would we typically do a privacy fence in that scenario? Or would we do more of a Lexington-style fence for decoration? What would we...
Yeah, wood or vinyl.
So, solid fence?
Yes.
Solid wood or vinyl, all right. What's our height typically?
So, I guess for, if you're talking about the purposes of screening between uses, a visual screen, typically that would be a six-foot opaque fence.
Yeah, there you go.
But there may be a difference between that and for security purposes, and what it may look like, whether it would be opaque or not. So, I guess there could be two applications. I don't know which you're considering.
I would be okay with a six-foot fence. I think that's adequate.
I think it would be opaque, either wood or vinyl.
Yeah. And so...
Six feet opaque, wood or vinyl.
And there might be vegetation, sorry, or...
So, let's... Before we... Before you... We're not quite committed to that. We probably can do something here. We're just wondering amongst ourselves whether vegetation, or some combination of vegetation and a six-foot fence that's not solid, would give the visual barrier... I think it would look better, but...
So, are you suggesting a solid fence?
We're not suggesting a solid fence and vegetation, because it doesn't make any sense, I don't think.
Oh, yeah. Do you have a preference? I think we're going to need to do a solid fence or a combination of a fence and vegetation to create the barrier and to have the full effect. So, does your client have a preference?
They've raised the vegetation issue with me just now, so let me... I'm sorry, I know you've got more cases tonight.
That's all right.
So, give me a second.
I think the question is, is this property line right here going back this way. I mean, you can't do anything back there. It's up against the creek.
I agree.
Yeah. They should hash this out before they got here.
So I think what my client's had in mind, and, and I didn't quite get it actually, is, is a, a three line fence, which I think is the same thing as what you'd refer to as a Lexington fence, plus vegetation.
Mr. Brooks, from this, from the-
Corner down there to-
The easiest way to do this is do it from that corner right there. I know, we're not trying to shortchange it, but-
Well, it, it will be, when we go back there and you go back ten feet, when you take the vegetation out and leave that, from that corner line to-
Die for Grove.
Um, there, there. Got it. Got it. From the current tree line.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
So you're doing vegetation and a fence, and, and veget, by vegetation, I'm, I'm gonna rely on staff. Let's, let's define that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Can we do the same? So we can do the same spec we did, yes, on, on die for Grove.
I like that, yeah.
Yeah. Now, we're gonna change it every six feet, so you guys have to keep up with it.
So once we make this DPC, Kevin, I think what Hamp is suggesting, would you bring your client up so that, so that they can agree to that?
I'll take this back.
So Mr. Wheeler, just for the record, um, um, I do hear your concern. Uh, this is a bit of a compromise, and we realize that. There are some things that, that, uh, I think we can fully and completely address, and others that we can't. And, uh, and so, uh, this is an effort to find compromise on both sides and get you some portion of what you're looking for. But we do realize we haven't completely addressed all of your security issues. And I thank you, I thank you for that, and we do understand. Uh, Hamp, do we have the wording for this?
So a six foot-
I think it was a three rail horse fence.
That's fine.
With six evergreens and three deciduous trees per one hundred linear feet in the area highlighted in green on the six.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Brooks. Commissioners, any other questions for what the changes have been, or, uh, what we, what has been proposed? So before we move forward, Hamp, have we done everything we need to do? Have we, have we got acceptance here?
Yes. I think, I think the applicant has agreed to a new DPC that addresses the south block.
Alright, very good. Thank you. Thank you all for your time and your, and your good comments. Uh, would call for a motion for this zoning- I'm sorry, what'd you say? Yeah. Is there any, uh, excuse me. Yes, okay, excuse me. Uh, hearing no other comments, if there are, we're glad to listen to them. It would call for a motion for this zoning map amendment, please.
Make the motion to approve the proposed zoning ma- zoning map amendment together with and conditioned upon the general development plan docket number two zero two one six eight ZCO. Based on the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus 2030 comprehensive plan as demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the, therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further, I request this motion includes the summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at the public hearing.
Second. Mr. Volker?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Drain?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Ronsell?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Warren?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you all for your time. This goes to the, uh, uh, Warren County Fiscal Court. Our next item tonight is twenty twenty-one sixty-nine Z County. Randy and Anita Russell have filed an application to rezonate a portion of a tract of land containing approximately one point seven acres located at forty-six ninety-three Hydro Ponsville Road from Ag to RE Residential State with the general development plan.
You, uh, Chair Warren, we had a pre-app on November ninth. The property you see here outlined in yellow, again, that is one point seven acres at forty-six ninety-three Hydro Ponsville, going from Ag to RE. In order to subdivide the existing home onto a smaller lot with the remaining portion retaining its current Ag zoning and being added to the adjacent parcel to the north occupied by Pleasant Grove Baptist Church, that you can see, uh, pretty roughly in the exhibit there and there. So, uh, going back, the zoning is agriculture. The existing land use is single-family residential. The future land use is agriculture. And the prop, proposed density is point five nine dwelling units per acre. Because the proposal will result in the enlargement of an existing agricultural tract and the number of lots will remain the same, no flume amendment has been required tonight. Um, and the planning commission should determine if this is, uh, proposed development is compatible with the surrounding area. Flipping on to the second page, you'll see the consideration for the agriculture, future land use map designation. Um, and then looking down below, we've got our site characteristics review. Uh, there's nothing in particular that we, that I had tagged to, to go over in this section, but if there's anything you all like, I'm, I'm happy to do that. Uh, if not, moving on down to site design and compatibility, uh, I will note the surrounding density, that densities do range from zero to one point zero one dwelling units per acre, with a median density of zero point zero one dwelling units per acre and an average of zero point two five dwelling units per acre. The proposed density here is zero point five nine dwelling units per acre. Uh, looking on down to surrounding architectural features, home sizes within a quarter mile range from seven hundred and fifty-six square feet to fifteen hundred, uh, roughly square feet, with a median of roughly eleven hundred and fifty square feet and an average of, uh, basically the same, eleven hundred and forty square feet. The current residence is one thousand and sixteen square feet. Uh, looking down under building materials review, the current residence I will highlight has a vinyl exterior with a plain face block foundation, uh, and that other residences within a quarter mile are mainly metal, wood, or vinyl. Looking on over to the next page, uh, there's nothing for the area-specific policy review. Uh, the applicants did supply the following development plan conditions, uh, to address this application. Number one, if the existing residence is ever replaced, uh, they considered, or added a consideration for orientation to face Hydro Ponsville, Hydro Ponsville Road. Uh, number two, again, if the existing residence is ever replaced, a consideration that the new residents would have a minimum, uh, sixteen hundred square feet of heated space. Number three, uh, cites that the existing entrances are proposed to remain and will continue to serve the property. However, if there are any changes, uh, proposed, that they would be coordinated with Warren County Public Works. Number four, uh, that the existing residents will continue to utilize the existing septic system, uh, and that the Barron River District Health Department shall perform a site evaluation for any new residents prior to the issuance of a building permit. Number five deals with the preservation of existing vegetation and considerations for sinkholes. And number six, uh, is that if the existing residence is ever replaced, at least twenty-five percent of the exterior of any new residential structure shall be constructed of cementitious material, and the foundation of any new residential structure will be brick veneer and exclude plain and split, split face block. Looking on down under the Focus twenty thirty category review, staff identified sixteen items, eleven of which comply, five of which are up to the planning commission's determination. We can go over those if you all like. But if not, we can jump back to the points to consider on page one. Uh, the proposed development is exempt from the flume, uh, in compliance with agriculture, future land use map category, because the proposal will result in the enlargement of an existing Ag tract and the number of lots will remain the same. Number two, the proposed development complies with the majority of review criteria for site design and majority of the site characteristics review criteria, and the proposal meets the minimum requirements of the zoning ordinance. And lastly, the planning commission should determine the proposed development is compatible with the area. That's all I've got for the staff report, but I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Zach. Commissioners, any questions? Zach, I want to summarize what I think I just heard. Uh, the, the existing residence is going to stay. The only reason they're doing this is so that they can combine Lot Two with the church property.
Uh, that is correct. Applicants have said no.
Just, just a minute, sir. Hold on, just, you'll come up here in just a second. Thank you. Uh, so, so from the staff's perspective, is my understanding correct?
That was my understanding. I let the applicants clarify, but that, yeah, that was my understanding, is that Lot Two was being combined with that parcel that says Pleasant Grove Baptist Church directly to the north.
And that's on page eleven.
I'm also looking at the project summary, and, and that's also, it says Lot One of the Randy and Anita Russell property will be rezoned from Ag to RE. Lot Two will stay zoned Ag and will be added to the Pleasant Grove Baptist Church property. Is that correct? Alright, alright. Thank you, Mr. Graham. Any, any other questions for? Yeah, yep, yes, sir. We'll give you, thank you, Zach. Any other questions, commissioners? Is the applicant here? Would you like to come up and? If you would state your name and address, please, sir?
Andy Russell, sixteen fifty-five Ponsville Kepler Road.
You swear to tell the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Number one, the lot where the house is belonged to the farm. Why is it be ta- why is it being taken away from the farmland and rezoning as residential, is what I'm asking? Cause that's not the lot that we're giving the church. The lot we're giving the church is, what, Lot Two, or whichever one that is to the north, I can't see.
That's, that's correct. So, because you're reducing the, the amount of land that is with the house, that is what required the rezoning of the land with the house because of the minimum lot area in the agricultural zone.
Cause Kevin Crow messed up the survey the first time, I've gotta get this rezoned to this and not consider it as part of the farmland.
Well, it's segmented by the road, so there's no way that it cannot, it can't be made any smaller without rezoning the property.
That's what I'm saying. I'm, I'm not gonna ma- make it any smaller other than that little lot there.
Right. So by carving off the top piece, Lot Two, the, the area that remains with the home has to be rezoned under the zoning ordinance, because it can't be made any smaller. It's already smaller than the minimum that's required in the agricultural zone.
It's a part of the seventy-five acres that was in the deed to me from my grandmother.
Correct. But it doesn't physically adjoin the rest of the land because the road segments it. It, it's still part of the property that you own, but because the road segments the, the land-
Understand the property you own, but why is it being taken away from the agriculture when it was part of the agriculture?
Cause the, the minimum lot size in agriculture is five acres. And so you're making it-
Kevin Crow messed, surveying this up, instead of just doing what I told his guy to do at the top, he added all that in. So now I gotta get it rezoned and pay different taxes on it.
I'm not sure what your discussion with Kevin Crow was before this application was made through our office.
And just, just to clarify, this won't affect your taxes. This is separate from-
It's still, it, it bothers me because it's not part of the farm, and it, and it was. You know, I mean, that little, that one little spot, I'm never gonna use it. It's full of trees, it's got rocks in it, the cemetery is right there beside it. I was, all I wanted to do was give them that piece of property. So, if they wanted to, they can make a parking lot down there on that end for people that are buried on that end, because there's no other way to get to it. Like I said, I'm never gonna use that part of, that part of the land because it's, it's not, it's not set up for Ag. It's all growed up in the woods. And I'm just wondering why we gotta take the house off of the, off of the seventy-five acres. So does that mean I own four different properties now, instead of three? Because the house that we, that we live in is on a separate piece, piece of property. The farm that we own around the house, I bought off my cousin, so it's a separate, uh, piece of property. But that one there, my grandmother left me. It's a place where I grew up, and, you know, it was part of the farm. I'm wondering why it's gotta be rezoned to residential. That doesn't make any sense to me.
I, well, I think that's what Rachel's saying, just because of the zoning regs, to do what you're wanting to do, we will have to do this. You, you're welcome to take the application out. You don't have to do this tonight.
That the only way you can give Lot Two to the church is to rezone the property. There's, there's no other option.
So, in this was all set up to begin, the first time, when that was surveyed, how come I didn't have to come then?
I, I don't, I don't, I'm not familiar with the original survey. I, I don't know what the plans were.
The only said it was fine, but the house was included, and I just want, you know-
Was the first, was this, was the first survey, did it include everything that we're looking at, Lot One and Two being added to the church?
Kevin Crow did, yes.
Okay. That would not have required you to rezone the property, because you would be taking everything as it physically exists right now, and you'd be adding it to church property. And under the zoning, you wouldn't have to change anything. But if you're making the, the land area smaller, that's what has required the zone change.
Well, I'm taking what, what is it, what is Lot One or Two?
Lot, Lot Two that you're giving to the church, that's point seven two acres.
So point seven two acres. Alright, nevermind. I quit.
Alright. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Uh, is there anybody in, in the audience that has questions or, uh, opposition to this request?
So, Mr. Russell?
Would you state, I'm sorry, would you state your name and address, please?
Anita Russell, sixteen fifty-five Ponsville Kepler Road.
Thank you very much. You swear to tell the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
I do.
Thank you.
You all are the applicants, and you have asked that we rezone this property so that you can give what is described as Lot Two to the church.
Correct.
It doesn't sound like Mr. Russell wants us to do that.
He does. We do want to give that portion to the church. He, something in his head, I don't know, if he's just taking it away from the farm and calling it, you know, residential instead of agriculture. He will be fine.
Translate that for you, Hamp. It'll be fine.
It'll be fine. Yeah. He did-
At least that's the way it works in my house, anyway.
Just to explain a little bit, he, he has PTSD. It's a bad time of the year, Christmas, starting yesterday, so just please forgive him.
Thank you.
We just wanted to clarify.
Yes.
Do, do the applicants really want to do this?
Yes.
And I think you're saying, yes, we, yes, we do.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And if he wants, he don't want to do this, even after tonight?
Okay.
We're going to proceed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, any other questions? There's no questions from the audience, so a call for a motion, please.
Make a motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with condition upon the general development plan, docket number twenty twenty-one sixty-nine Z County. Based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus 2030 comprehensive plan that's demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further, I request that this motion include a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unseld?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Drane?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Warren?
Yes, ma'am. Motion goes to Warren County Fiscal Court. Our next item tonight is twenty twenty-one seventy Z County. Richard and Bella Marie Walton and Boulder Building Group LLC care of Shapoor Hijal, excuse me if I mispronounced your name, have filed an application to rezone tracts of land containing approximately thirty point two-six acres located zero twenty-five thirty Plum Springs Road, approximately four hundred and sixty feet from Mormon Lane, from agriculture and RE residential state to RS one D, single-family residential with the general development plan. Ms. Hurt?
Thank you, Chair Warren. We had a pre-application meeting on September fifteenth for the property you just described, located on Plum Springs Road. The current zoning of the property is agriculture with a current land use of agriculture and vacant. And actually, there's also, it's not outlined in red on here on the map, but part of this involves the RE parcel that's just outside the boundary. The future land use designation for the property is moderate-density residential, and we have a category description on page two for the moderate-density residential future land use category, which includes areas developed for higher-density, single-family detached and attached development, including RS one C and RS one D development, as well as semi-detached multifamily development, including duplexes, townhouses, apartment buildings, condominiums, and mobile home parks. densities in this future, future land use category should range between three and a half and thirteen dwelling units per acre. If we jump to the preliminary development plan that was submitted, you'll see that the applicants are proposing a hundred and forty-seven, single-family residential lots. Lot sizes and setbacks will follow those outlined for RS one D in the zoning ordinance. I'll touch on water and wastewater adequacy. If the proposed development is approved, the property will have to be served by sufficient water flow and pressure, and also necessary fire hydrants would have to be installed in order to comply with minimum fire protection requirements, and the proposed development would be served by sewer. Looking at prime farmland, a significant portion of the proposed development area contains a soil type classified as prime farmland. If we look at the surrounding density, jumping down to the site design and compatibility review section, if we look at the density map on the screen, you'll see that densities in the area range from zero point one-seven to two point seven-seven dwelling units per We have included characteristics about the surrounding architectural features and also building materials. Those sections in the staff report are pretty lengthy, but I'll be happy to touch on any of those in great, greater detail if we need to, but those are there for your reference. Looking at proposed open space, the proposed RS one D zone allows a maximum of seventy-five percent lot coverage per lot, meaning that twenty-five percent of each lot will remain as open space. The applicants have also required five percent open space in development plan condition eleven. However, there is no reference to such open space designated on the preliminary development plan. Looking down at the traffic impact study, section three-one-four of the zoning ordinance outlines the requires for a traffic, the requirements for a traffic impact study, and a traffic impact study was not required by the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet or the Warren County Public Works Department. In lieu of the improvement that's outlined on the bottom of page three, and that is from KYTC, they have requested that a right turn lane be installed on Plum Springs Road into the development, and the applicants did agree to this requirement in development plan condition three, and the application therefore complies with the requirements of section three-one-four of the zoning ordinance. On page four, looking at the development plan conditions, number one limits the development to a maximum of one hundred and forty-seven residential building lots. Number two requires a minimum home size of twelve hundred square feet of heated living space exclusive of porches or garages, and that each residence will have a minimum of a one-car attached garage, or sorry, a one-car garage with an eighteen-foot wide driveway. Three outlines the turn lane requirement that I just mentioned on the previous page. Four limits building height to two stories. Five states that exteriors of all structures would consist of vinyl, brick, stone, drive-it, cement-based siding, man-made stone, or other modern masonry material, and shall exclude any wood siding. No residence shall have exterior, exteriors exceeding seventy-five percent vinyl. Plain-faced block and split-faced block shall be prohibited as an external facade material, and foundations shall be brick or stone. Number six requires that all new utility lines be located underground. Seven requires uniform street lighting. Eight addresses preservation of a portion of the existing vegetation and mature trees. Nine requires that all lots be accessed through internal streets only. Ten states that the side and rear facades of any homes built on lots fronting Plum Springs Road shall be screened from Plum Springs Road by a landscape buffer ten feet in width consisting of six evergreen trees and three deciduous trees per one hundred linear feet, and the developer also agrees to plant at least one tree on each residential lot. Number eleven references the five percent open space requirement. Twelve deals with sinkhole mitigation. Thirteen requires that development plan conditions two, four, and five become plat restrictions when a plat is recorded. Fourteen states that five-foot-wide sidewalks will be constructed on both sides of internal streets within the development. Fifteen requires a homeowners' association and that all property owners be members. And sixteen states that the developers shall donate any salvageable materials from the existing home to Habitat for Humanity Restore or similar philanthro, philanthropic, philanthropic, thank you, organization. Looking at the Focus 2030 category review, the staff evaluated twenty items. We found that six of those items are in compliance, zero were found out of compliance, and there are fourteen that, that the planning commission should evaluate for compliance, the first being LU one-point-one-point-three, which looks at compatibility. Next, LU two and two-point-one, which look at quality of development and character of the area. Next, looking at LU two-point-one-point-one, which looks at open space and whether or not the proposed open space is adequate and usable. Jumping down to LU two-one-four, PR one-point-seven and NCR one-point-one-point-six, which look at preservation of the existing tree canopy. Jumping down to NCR five and NCR, sorry, NCR two-point-five and NCR two-point-five-point-three, which include considerations for historic structures. Next, LU two-five-two, HN one and HN one-point-three, which look at compatibility, character, and pattern of development. And last, HN two-point-one and HN four, which look at location and suitability of the proposed development. Going to jump back to page one and look at our points to consider. First, the proposal is consistent with the future land use map. Second, the proposed development complies with the majority of the site characteristics review criteria, with exceptions noted regarding existing road infrastructure and water adequacy. Third, the proposed development complies with the majority of the review criteria for site design with considerations noted regarding open space and tree preservation. The proposed development does meet the minimum requirements of the zoning ordinance. And last, compatibility of the proposed development, including the proposed density, should be determined by the planning commission. That is all for the staff report, but I am happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, any questions for Ms. Hurt? Rachel, just a quick question on LU two-point-one-point-one. So, RSD requires a twenty-five percent open space per lot.
Per lot. And in addition to that, in their development plan conditions, they agreed to provide five percent open space.
Okay, so they're doing the twenty-five percent plus the five percent?
Correct.
Okay.
But there's no clarification as to whether or not that would be per lot or the development as a whole, and where that would be located, because there's nothing shown graphically that indicates where that five percent would be.
Okay, all right. The applicant does understand that they're, they're committing to that twenty-five percent, correct?
I, I believe so, just because that's a requirement of the zone that they've requested.
Okay.
Per lot, yep.
So, staying with that topic, the, the density, is it calculated based on what they've submitted, or the, or is it, would it be calculated after this twenty-five percent is taken into consideration?
Density is calculated based on the overall development area. So, the amount of land that you're considering for rezoning tonight is thirty point two-six acres. And so, we factor in development plan condition one, that limits the development to one hundred and forty-seven lots. So, the density is calculated by the number of lots, or dividing that by the acreage, and that's where we came up with the four point eight-six dwelling units per acre.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, Rachel, to follow Mr. Graham's question, if we look at the density map, the, the closest property adjoining that has a density of Lansing Way, Quebec Way, Calgary Way, has a density of two-point-four units per acre.
Two-point-zero-four is the density for Northridge, yes.
And so, this proposed development, when you factor in the open space, is four-point-eight-six. So, are we comparing apples and apples to both of those? Does that make sense?
Yes, so you'll see on, actually on the density map, Northridge has open space requirements that were imposed in their binding elements, so that would be these larger, larger areas that are shown on the density map.
Right.
So, that overall density factors in the entire development area and includes the open space.
Well, this is almost two and a half times Northridge.
Yes.
Density-wise.
Density-wise, yep.
Is Northridge RS one D?
Uh, I think it's C. Let's jump back to the, yeah, Northridge is RS one C.
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 Okay, so, and moderate density in the future land use map is C or D, is that correct?
Both the RS one C and RS one D zones are identified as potentially compatible in that future land use category, and then I think, as Ben had mentioned in the previous application, that's just one element of the comprehensive plan, and I think Zach kind of mentioned or hit on that, too. And then you would factor in all of the other Focus 2030 category review items in your staff report on page four and five, along with that.
So, would this be the only RS one D so far? Are there any others?
There was another application last year, or earlier this year. I'm, I'm getting the years confused. But if you look at the zoning map, right across the way here, that was the Ersman property, and that was rezoned to RS one D with an approved density, if we go back to the density map, of two-point-seven-six dwelling units per acre.
Still two times, right? Two times the density. Okay, thank you, Rachel.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Tim. Any other questions for Rachel? Commissioners? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is the applicant here, or their representative?
Chair Warren, Chris Davenport for Boulder Builders Group and their principal, Mr. Shapoor Elzall, who's with me tonight. And I swear to tell the truth, my address is nine twenty-one College Street. Let me just, first of all, it's, it's always good to see you all. This week, it's particularly good to see you all. Glad everyone's well. Secondly, I did want to tell the staff that I did not know they were on Twitter, but I have found you on Twitter, and if you haven't seen the maps they've been showing, it's pretty remarkable, so that's appreciated. I think that's a pretty cool thing. Now, to the point that we're here, so let me just pick up, instead of going over this whole application, obviously, density was going to be a discussion, I knew that. So, the last development that Rachel talked about, oh, one more aside, I'm glad to hear she's critical of Kevin sometimes, too. So, I was starting to feel like that was just me, but, you know, I heard that, so it makes me feel a lot better. This, this is the, the last development that was done this year. I, I presented that. That was a group, I can't remember the applicant, but Rodney Rogers was the principal of that. That was done probably, well, it was when it last year, was approved through fiscal court, that's been finalized. And the point that I wanted to make out, and Commissioner Volker, you're right, you know, Northridge is two, this is two-seven-six, we're not quite twice that, but we are basically two units an acre more than that. And what I would stress to you all, I'm going the wrong way. This is what I want to point out to you. Now, Northridge has been around a while. I'm not sure when Northridge was done, but if these developments were talked, but I believe they're the oldest. And of course, Northridge is back in here. But when you look at, is it Metta View, McKinney Farms, what I will call the Rogers Development, they exist on this side of the road. And what you can tell there, this is the flume we're looking at, and we are on what is designated on the flume as the moderate-density side of this area. Moderate-density, and I appreciate Mr. Graham's question. Your question was, isn't RS one C and D consistent with moderate-density on the flume? And I think what Rachel said was, it can be. And the reason for that is moderate-density on the flume doesn't necessarily equate to a zoning class, but it gives a zoning, it gives a density. And on the flume, moderate-density is listed at three-point-five units to thirteen units. And so, what I want to stress here is, in designating this property on the flume, I believe, and I don't want to speak too much for the commission, but when, when you do that, what you are telling developers, and what, what the decision that's been made is, at least prospectively, the idea is that this area, if we're going to have more dense areas, if we're going to have more dense development, we should look to the moderate-density classified areas. Again, moderate-density being three-point-five units an acre to thirteen units an acre. This area, as opposed to Mr. Rogers across the street, he was low-density, so he's up to three-point-five units an acre. So, that development came in at the high end of his flume designation. What we're asking here tonight is at the low end of our flume designation. I used to always make a big deal when, when my applications were flume-compliant, the thunder's kind of been stolen because you know it's flume-compliant, or we wouldn't be here tonight. We would be, we would be on a flume docket. So, I don't know if that clarifies that a little bit, but knowing that density was going to be pointed out, I really would stress you all to look at the flume map here and see why, as, as opposed to Metta View, as opposed to McKinney Farms, as opposed to Mr. Rogers Development, why we are higher than those. Now, the operative question is, why are you higher than Northridge? Right? Because Northridge is also in the moderate-density classification. All I, all I can say is, I, I don't really know why Northridge wound up where it is, density-wise. I do know it's, it's one of the older of these subdivisions. So, did you want to-
I was just going to say that Northridge was, the majority, minus a few later phases, was rezoned-
was rezoned before the comprehensive plan was adopted with the future land use map.
Thank you. I didn't, I knew it was older, but I didn't know if it actually predated the flume. So I didn't want to state that because I wasn't sure about that. But that actually, I kind of suspected that.
So this may be a question for staff. Do we have, has, have other applicants rezoned a piece of property using this future land use map where it has been designated moderate density? And done RS-1D? Yes?
I think so. I can't think of a specific example.
But you think it has? Just hasn't, there just hasn't been this dense in RS-1D, is that correct?
Well, and sometimes we've had instances where the lot sizes may be larger, but applicants wanted the flexibility to use the development standards in RS-1D because they have less restrictive setback requirements and lot width requirements and things like that. So even though RS-1D on the face may be more dense, sometimes, in reality, it's not that way just because of the development standards that the applicant wanted to use.
Engineering and all those things, is that accurate?
Well, that and then just that the developer wanted a lesser setback than what's required in some of the RS-1 zones or a smaller lot width.
Commissioner Graham, to that point, a number of applications I've been involved in, in order to get the setbacks they wanted, you have seen applications over the years, the last two or three years that were PUDs, but it had a higher density like this. And the reason for the PUD was so they could name their setbacks, front, side, rear setbacks. So we didn't do RS-1D in those because we were specializing the setbacks, so to speak. Which really brings me to the other question y'all had, and that is, the 25% lot, you know, coverage, no more than 75%. And the concept plan that we have... So Mr. Lucas is here. He's the engineer Thad Lucas that did this concept and has done the engineering work. And I kind of whispered over my shoulder to confirm what I thought was the truth before I came up here. And that is, when these concepts are laid out, what Thad looks at and other engineers, they look at the class that we're asking for, in this case RS-1D. They look at what are the setback requirements? What are the square footage minimums? Not only minimums, but what are we intending? Because the minimum is a minimum. So then he creates these concepts, or the engineers do, that create lots that will meet those requirements. In other words, your widths are wide enough to meet the ordinance, your depths are correct to meet the ordinance, you have enough square footage to put your footprint, to not go over the 75% coverage on each lot, so forth and so on. So that's actually done on the front end, before we ever present these concepts. The 5% is in addition to the 25% per lot. And it's kind of, and I know Rachel said it wasn't depicted on here. It is, it's not very obvious. Because it's, Thad kind of tricked everybody. If you'll notice, the DPC say no more than 147 lots, and there's a lot 148, which would not be allowed. That is actually meant to depict, in this case, 5% open space. This, I'm pointing to it on the concept up here. You can see the little easement that Thad left for the neighbors to access that open space.
So that's actually open space?
Correct.
I see.
Yeah. So I think that kind of addresses the, some of the things I heard the commission discussing. The other things I want to point out, we've talked, we've compared this development to these other developments from a density standpoint. But I also want to stress the comparison from a material and a square footage standpoint. We are a minimum of 1,200. Meadowview Phase One is 1,200. Northridge is 1,100. Mr. Rogers across the street is 1,200. So we are, I think, right on par with that. From a material standpoint, my client is agreeing that no more than 75% of each residence will be vinyl. That means at a minimum, each house will have a front facade of brick or stone, or hardy board, is essentially what he's going at there. Again, doesn't mean that there won't be houses completely comprised of brick. But at a minimum, there'll be no completely vinyl homes. Northridge has no such restriction. Northridge's, either DPCs or binding element, whatever, they allow for all vinyl. And according to staff report, a majority of those homes are all vinyl, that's currently built. We are requiring a one-car garage. Northridge has no garage requirement. We are requiring...
Chris, let me ask you a quick question on the, on the, on the one-car garage. On the driveways, are they concrete?
We don't have that included. And again, we didn't do that in this subdivision because that's not consistent with the, with my understanding, the conditions of the other around us. I don't think staff noted those other restrictions in the other developments, but that's my understanding. On foundations, Northridge has block foundations. We're going to have brick, if this passes, brick or stone foundations. So again, I understand the density is a little high, is higher, no doubt about that. The explanation for that, as we've found our way to, is that we are in a moderate density area. The only other subdivision that's on our same moderate density flume was rezoned and began before the flume was ever even enacted. So policy-wise, why does that make sense? As I always say, you all have competing interest when it comes to meeting our housing demands. It is density versus sprawl. And if we, if everything's less dense, that means we need, obviously, more acreage. And so that is up to you all to determine how you balance that. I would submit to you, that is a large part what the flume is designed to do. And that's why this request is being made on this 30-something acres. And I guess that's the other point I make. I know the density is more, but if you look at the total acreage of the developments, this is a smaller tract of land than an 80 or 90 tract of land that would have that same type of density. Other amenities, just very quickly, we are committed to double sidewalks. As Rachel noted, there are no policies that are out of compliance. We do have the judgment calls that we always have. And I think that's about what I wanted to present to you and stress to you, unless you all have any questions.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions for Mr. Davenport?
Chris, I don't have a question, but I'm just going to, I mean, tell you, I think it's too dense. Just, I mean, you know, you do a great job every other Thursday here with the applications you bring, and I understand, but my opinion is too dense for the area.
And I appreciate the feedback. And although it may be just rhetorical, again, I would stress, if 3.5 is too dense, then the flume designation of this property is either misleading or wrong. Because that's where we're at.
I think what Mr. Volker's talking about is compatible with the other areas.
It's more, it's more compatibility. I mean, everything I look at that's in the surrounding, whether it was zoned when and what, you know, everything seems to be in that high ones to somewhere in the twos. And jump into a 4.7, 4.8, I mean, I'm just one vote. I think it's too dense.
Thank you, Mr. Volker. Any other questions for Mr. Davenport or comments before he takes a seat? Here's one last question. Are you looking for this density for the setbacks or to, so that you have more? I guess, let me cut to the chase. Do you really plan to have this many lots on this property? Or are you asking for the most you can get and then let engineering pare it down based on drainage and all that stuff?
There is no question that I would expect it to go down. But I do not want anyone on this board to think that we definitely have a lower number in mind. And we intend to, you know, do that. And I would never want to make that comment to Commissioner Graham, and then 146 lots get built. There's no question that engineering works downward. I mean, you always lose lots. But I can't in good conscience tell you that we know where that will be. Does that make sense?
Thank you. Thank you, Chris. Is there anyone in the audience that has an opposition to this request or a comment that they would like to make regarding this zoning map, this zoning change? Or do you all have a spokesperson or... Each person has three minutes, so we'll respect your time. Yes, sir?
They're Biggs. Dooder Biggs, B-I-G-G-S, Dooder, D-O-O-D-E-R.
And your address, please, sir?
1850 Moore Mill Lane. I'm in the bottom square.
You swear to tell the truth? Swear to tell the truth?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
I'm hard-hitting.
That's all right.
Have to holler a little bit, if you don't mind.
No, you want us to holler at you?
Yeah, just holler. That'll help me out. I run a dozer 48 years, so I'm halfway dead.
Are you the same Dooder?
But anyway.
Are you the same Dooder Biggs that used to operate a dozer?
Yeah. That's true. But anyway, I've been on 1850 Moore Mill Lane for 34 years. Me and my wife, Brenda, has. And we've been on every foot over the property on Mr. Walton's side, the one he's trying to develop. And there's a bunch of sinkholes, some of them in there, you can drop rock like the size of a baseball or tennis ball, drop them down, you can hear them hit water. I've got one or two on my property that's the same thing. There's a creek or stream that runs down through there, comes out under 3184 Plum Springs Road. It's many a times that I've seen water and listened to the water that, you know, when you drop something down there, like I say, I got one on mine, one or two on mine, too. But one of the reasons is, if they go in there in dynamite and they hit that and open it up, then it's going to run up underneath my house. And these houses, how much these houses going for?
That's really not, that's not a question.
All righty. Well, my house appraised $400,000. And they putting these little houses behind me, which, you know, one of my complaints is privacy. All around, I guess that lady there, Northridge, they taking all of our privacy away. Every bit of it. These people bought their houses that way. I built mine over a year or two ago that way. Which I know privacy don't mean nothing to a lot of people, you know, and stuff like that. But anyway, as he said a while ago, there'll be 88 homes built over Plum Springs Road. On Plum Springs Road, 60 building McKinney Farms. There's going to be 147 on Walton's place. And then there's going to be 60 down in McKinney Farms. So you can add the numbers up there, which I got them here in a minute. Jay Builders has already built 1,100 houses in Northridge subdivision, which all of this they building is with a quarter of a mile, a half a mile from all of us that, you know, lives out that way. Traffic wrecks out there every week. You check police reports. Speaking of all of that, how narrow the road is. Moore Mill Lane measures edge of Blacktop, edge of Blacktop, 19 foot and 3 inches. And you got these big trucks coming in here all the time, concrete truck wrecks all the time on it. Plum Springs Road measures 20 foot and 3 inches. And that's a narrow road to get all this traffic and stuff. And most people, 147 houses and stuff on the Walton Place, you add all that up, and full along, you got close to 4,200 people that's driving vehicles, cars or trucks, up and down the road. And that's not counting if you got three in a family. If you got three in a family, then you got another, and you add another quarter of that. So that's going to put you almost 5,100 vehicles, more not counting 1,100 houses that Jay Allen's building.
All right, your three minutes is up. Closing comment.
I'm sorry?
Your three minutes are up. A closing comment. You've made great comments.
Already? I ain't got to tell my rest.
Well, I'm sorry, but we have to let everybody, we have to let everybody speak. So you've done a good job. Closing comment.
All righty. Is that it?
That's it. Thank you.
But anyway, can I say one more thing?
Real quick.
It's been better out there at Moore Mill Lane. There's seven, 1,100 houses going up that Jay Allen built or is building, and a half a mile to three quarters of a mile for they building that.
Okay, thank you, sir.
The road's overpopulated. I mean, you know, it's too narrow for everybody to be.
Okay, thank you. Great comments. Thank you. So we, this gentleman addressed the water. So if there was a development on this property, the developers have to contain their own water. I'm going to quit yelling, excuse me. Just wanted him to hear me. He brought the issue of privacy, traffic on Moore Mill Lane, and the road width of Moore Mill Lane. Is there anybody else that would like to add something different? We want to hear anybody's comments. We don't want to shut anybody off. But we've talked about those four matters. Is there anything different? Yes, ma'am. Your name and address, please.
Shirley R. Moore, 1643 Calgary Way.
Yes, ma'am. Do you swear to tell the truth?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I just wanted to ask, the utilities in this area, if they develop this much, will they be able to handle, like Warren County, the water and the electric sewer?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. That's a prerequisite of them applying to this. All the utilities have agreed to this.
Is there any chance that, could it be less dense, less houses?
Well, that, what we're here tonight is to hear their proposal, okay? And then this, our staff and this zoning, we have all of our parameters. And that is the determination here tonight. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, could you use your pointer and show, I live at 1643 Calgary Way. Could you show me in what proximity I am to this development?
You back up to this development.
Okay. And then the new property proposal is what, 200 feet? From my, you know, out 200 feet?
So you share a boundary. Your rear property line is, where'd the pointer go? Oh, it's up here.
Is it this?
Yes. Your rear property line?
Okay.
Is the same as this thing left line. So your property adjoins the property that's proposed to be rezoned.
Okay. So is there any setback?
I think she's referring to where, ma'am, are you asking like where the home would be built?
Exactly.
Okay, yeah.
I called it a setback line. That's probably not the proper termination.
It actually is, yeah. That's what cued us in, that you were asking about the home.
10 feet.
Yeah, the required setback from the rear property line, the common property line with yours, for the primary residence is 10 feet. If somebody wanted to build a detached building, like a storage shed, then that would be a five-foot setback off of your property line, is what the zoning ordinance requires.
Okay. And you're saying the back of my home on Q is a dark black line?
That's not the back of your home. That's the back of your property.
Right, and then 10 feet back of that is...
Is as close as they could build a home, under the ordinance.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, thank you very much. Any other comments or questions regarding this proposal tonight? Thank you all for being here. Commissioners, we will call for a motion on this proposal.
Yes, sir, Mr. Davenport.
An unusual request.
You're going to change the development plan conditions?
No, that would be usual.
That's a usual request, okay.
I have asked my client to really consider Commissioner Volker's question. I've talked to my client about Commissioner Graham's question, that being realistically, Chris, how many lots do you think you're going to lose? That's, I think, I know what that probably is, but I don't think that's probably going to be consistent or maybe enough to meet, to address your concerns. So what I would like to do, if Mr. Moore says it's appropriate, it would be to request to table this. And the reason for that is, for me to get a reduced density, it's going to take some work on my client's part. I do not want to advise him into a number that does not make sense for the development. It would be unwise. I do not want to advise him into a number that does not make sense for the development. It would be unwise to do that, but I do want to put forth a good faith effort, frankly.
I agree. I think that's a wise move. So, so do we have agreement from, I see some discussion here from Hamp.
Actual situation, I think it's best to do it as exigent as possible. Yeah. That's a long answer for yes.
Big word. All yours.
So, so, so really, I guess, the actual, actually what we're doing is withdrawing. No, we're tabling. It is a table. Okay, all right. And then we've got a. So we, this motion will be tabled until the next available meeting, and we appreciate everybody being here tonight. Oh, excuse me. All right.
I make a motion that we table this applicant.
Second.
January sixth, at five-thirty PM in this room, everybody present. Now, now, also, that, so everybody. Yeah, so also that means the five of us are the only ones that can hear this motion.
That can hear the next one, okay.
Chris, just so you understand that. Okay, so if one of us, I know, but if one of us cannot be here on the sixth.
Yeah, it goes to the next one.
Well, we're gonna make you go, it'll be actually the second February meeting. And there's a whole lot of reasons we can talk about afterwards, but.
None of us know we're going to miss, but we're just, we just make sure that you are aware, any one of us misses, it's gonna push you to the next agenda. Okay? Or to, a couple of agendas.
And at that point, we have tabled it to that date. I don't know if we could even table it to another date. Would it have to be withdrawn and then refiled?
I make the motion that we table this applicant, application until the January sixth at five-thirty in this room with the five of us present.
Second.
Honor, come.
Sir? Commissioner Volker?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Drain? Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Ronson?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Warren?
Yes, ma'am.
The motion is tabled till the January sixth meeting. Our next, our next, our next item tonight, our next item tonight is twenty twenty-one seventy-one ZBG Browning. If y'all could be holding it down back there, please. Browning Investors LLLP and TCP Properties LLC have filed an application to rezone a portion of attractive land containing approximately six-point-seven-five acres located at twenty sixteen Old Lover's Lane from Highway Business and Ag to RM three Townhouse Multifamily Residential with the general development plan. Ms. Hurt?
Thank you, Chair Warren. We had a pre-application conference on July twenty-second for the property you just described on Old Lover's Lane. The current zoning, as you mentioned, is Ag and HB. The current use of the property is single-family residential, and this property is located within the Cemetery Road Overlay Focal Point Plan area, so there is a special future land use map. So it is designated as Townhouse and Highway Business on the Cemetery Road Future Land Use Map. If we look at the preliminary development plan that was submitted, you'll see that the development has frontage on Old Lover's Lane. The proposed rezoning area doesn't actually touch Mount Victor Lane, but there is a proposed access point or entryway into the development from Mount Victor Lane. Looking at water and wastewater adequacy, if this proposal moves forward and is approved, adequate water and sewer would have to be provided to serve the property. Looking at the surrounding density, at the density map here, you'll see that density is in the area range from one-point-eight-six to thirteen-point-zero-three dwelling units per acre. The density of the proposed development is twenty-one-point-three-three dwelling units per acre. Jumping to page three in the building materials review, and also for building orientation, we've noted that the majority of the existing residences on Old Lover's Lane are brick, although there are a couple of vinyl homes also mixed in. The proposed development will be required to adhere to the material requirements outlined for the Cemetery Road Overlay and the zoning ordinance. So those are your higher-quality materials that are just required by ordinance. Looking at building orientation, all of the existing residences on Old Lover's Lane have a front facade oriented toward Old Lover's Lane. The applicants addressed building orientation and development plan condition number seven. I'll go over that in just a second. Looking at proposed open space, the zoning ordinance requires that all sites in the Cemetery Road Overlay District be developed with not less than twenty percent of the total area in green space, and no more than fifty percent of that green space may be located within a drainage facility. The applicants also agreed in development plan condition eight that the development will include a community open space with amenities such as a playground, community grill, and/or disc golf. Such open space, however, is not depicted on the preliminary development plan. Looking at bicycle, pedestrian, and transit facilities, there are currently no pedestrian facilities along Mount Victor Lane or Old Lover's Lane. However, the applicants agreed in development plan condition five that the development shall have sidewalks with a pedestrian connection leading to Mount Victor Lane and a connection to Lover's Lane allowing access to the Greenways Trail along same. Looking at section three-one-four of the zoning ordinance, I think you all are familiar with this section. It outlines the requirements for a traffic impact study. The impacted transportation agencies include Bowling Green Public Works, Warren County Public Works, and the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet. They actually required that a traffic impact study be completed and submitted for this proposed development. It was completed in November of this year by Cannon and Cannon, and the conclusions and recommendations from the traffic impact study are attached for your reference. It would be on page nineteen and twenty of your staff report. After reviewing the traffic impact study and the recommendations within the study, the transportation agencies outlined several requirements or improvements that they were requesting after reviewing the traffic impact study. The first, we'll look at the requirements requested from Bowling Green Public Works, and that is that Mount Victor Lane shall be widened to twenty-four feet from the intersection at Avery Lane. If we go back to the, more of an overview map here, whoops. Avery Lane is up here. The proposed development is outlined in pink. So, from Avery Lane to the proposed entrance onto Mount Victor Lane. Old Lover's Lane shall be widened to twenty-four feet from the proposed entrance on Old Lover's Lane to the intersection with Mount Victor Lane. So if we go back to the preliminary development plan, you'll see, basically, that requirement would be where the entrances are located on both of those roadways. That's where that widening would have to extend to. Then we'll look at KYTC. It says before a certificate of occupancy is issued for the site, the intersection of Lover's Lane and Mount Victor Lane, if we go back to the overview map here, now we're talking about this intersection here, Mount Victor Lane and Lover's Lane, shall be modified to eliminate the southbound left turn lane. Approximately one-hundred-and-fifty feet of pavement markings shall be modified and lane delineators shall be relocated to reflect the changes. KYTC may also require that the northbound left turn lane be eliminated at the same time, pending further crash monitoring at the intersection. KYTC also suggested an alternate option to install a cul-de-sac on Mount Victor Lane at Avery Lane and utilize Old Lover's Lane exclusively, meaning no direct access to Mount Victor Lane or Avery Lane. This would have to be done in coordination with the Bowling Green Public Works Department and the Warren County Public Works Department. And then, under the request of Warren County Public Works, the developers shall agree to participate in future roadway improvements to Old Lover's Lane at the directive of the Warren County Public Works Department. The applicants agreed to the road widening improvements for Mount Victor Lane and Old Lover's Lane in development plan condition three, and to participate in future roadway improvements to Old Lover's Lane at the directive of Warren County Public Works. The applicants, however, have not complied with any of KYTC's requested improvements to mitigate the additional traffic impacts of this development, including elimination of the southbound left turn lane at the intersection of Lover's Lane and Mount Victor Lane, or installation of a cul-de-sac that prohibits direct access to Mount Victor Lane and Avery Lane at such intersection. And I guess I should have mentioned before, it's kind of weird the way the county and city limits run, but part of Old Lover's Lane is actually in the county, and the northern, the northernmost part that's closest to the entrance or proposed entrance to the development appears as city-maintained roadway or in the city Bowling Green. So that's why we have three transportation agencies that are involved in the review of this application. Jumping down to the area-specific policy review, again, this is in the boundary of the Cemetery Road Overlay or Policy Plan area. We identified three applicable policies. We found that one of those items is in compliance. Two of those items, the planning commission should evaluate for compliance. The first of those being CRC one, which states that all development in the Cemetery Road corridor shall conform to the adopted future land use map, unless evidence can be presented that the proposed use is in compliance with the policies of the Cemetery Road Corridor Plan and the Comprehensive Plan. And then CRC two, which states that all residential development should be compatible with existing neighboring residential uses. Jumping to page five, we'll look at the development plan conditions. Number one limits the development to a maximum of one-hundred-and-forty-four multifamily residential units. Number two limits building height to two stories. Number three and ten address the roadway improvements or transportation considerations that I just reviewed in the traffic impact study section, so I'm not gonna read those again. Number four requires that the development be under singular ownership and management. Number five addresses sidewalks in the Greenway Connection, I think that I already reviewed on a previous page. Number six addresses tree preservation. Seven looks at building orientation along Old Lover's Lane, and requires that any residential structure most immediately adjacent to Old Lover's Lane be oriented to face Old Lover's Lane with parking to the rear of any such structure, and that, that pretty much is reflected on the preliminary development plan that's on the screen. Then we'll jump down to number eight, which looks at open space and residential amenities, and then number nine addresses sinkhole mitigation. Looking at the Focus 2030 category review, the staff evaluated twenty-three items. We found sixteen items would be up to your determination. Five items are in compliance, and then there are two items that are out of compliance. We'll look at the first, LU one-point-one-point-one and LU one-point-one-point-two, which look at the future land use map, and LU one-point-one-point-three, which addresses compatibility. LU two-point-one, which looks at development quality and character preservation. Looking on page six, LU two-one-one, which addresses open space. LU two-one-four PR one-point-seven and NCR one-point-one-point-six, which looks at tree preservation. TR two-point-one and LU two-three-one were the two items that the staff found out of compliance due to the transportation considerations I had mentioned previously in the traffic impact study portion of the report. Then, again, the remainder are for you to evaluate for compliance. That would be LU two-five-two and HN one-point-two, which look at infill development and compatibility. Next, LU two-eight and two-eight-one, which look at the Cemetery Road Policy Plan. Jumping down to HN one and HN one-point-three, which look at compatibility, character, and pattern of development. And then last, in the Focus 2030 category review, we have HN two-point-one and HN four, which look at development suitability and housing options. With that, I will jump back to page one and end with our points to consider. Again, the property is part of the Cemetery Road Overlay, and there is that special future land use designation of Townhouse and Highway Business. The Cemetery Road Corridor Policy Plan states that all development shall conform to the future land use map unless evidence is provided that the proposed use complies with the Cemetery Road Policies and Comprehensive Plan. Second, the proposed development complies with the majority of the site characteristics review criteria, with items noted relating to transportation infrastructure specifically regarding KYTC's requested improvements. Third, the proposed general development plan complies with the majority of the review criteria for site design with considerations noted regarding open space. And then last, the proposed development meets the requirements of the zoning ordinance as far as the preliminary development plan on the screen, and that compatibility of the proposed development should be determined by the planning commission. I did forget to mention before I started the staff report that you should have an email at your seats that we received late this afternoon from a neighbor in the area, and so that is also there for your consideration. But I believe that is all I have, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
So I want to make sure I understand, there was a traffic impact study done.
Yes.
But two of those requirements or recommendations are left unfulfilled in this proposal. Is that correct?
If we look at the recommendations on page four, what did I say, page fourteen? Or no, nineteen, I was way wrong. Page nineteen. So it's two pages, and there are several options that the consultant had recommended. So it wasn't a hard X-Y-Z, you should do these three things or these four things. There were different options that could help mitigate some of the current transportation issues. But after all of the transportation agencies reviewed the results of the traffic impact study, they then communicated with the applicants about what their requested improvements were. And I guess, all of that correspondence, the emails are attached at the rear section of your packet on the last pages. So that's also there for your reference. So you can see that they've had correspondence with the different transportation agencies, but ultimately, there was not an agreement between KYTC and the applicant. And they may want to speak more to that in just a minute.
But I do understand that there is, there is not an agreement, and we're possibly short two items, correct?
Correct. There were, there were two options that KYTC presented, and the applicant did not agree to either of those options.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, commissioners, for Ms. Hurt? And on our concept plan, Rachel, there is not a concept for an open space in this development.
Correct. It's mentioned in the development plan conditions, but as it, as graphically shown on the screen, there's no indication as to where those open space areas would be located.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other questions? Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you.
Is the applicant here, or their representative?
Chris Davenport, on behalf of the applicant, and I swear to tell the truth, nine twenty-one College Street. Just before I stepped up, Jace Caldwell, who's the engineer, said that he was gonna take this bullet on the playground, because the suggestion of the grills and the playground, and maybe the disc golf, was a suggestion of staff, maybe not that particular. But after we'd filed the application, that was a request they brought up, we agreed, we included a DPC, and he just didn't revise the concept. So he told me he was taking the bullet for that, so I didn't have to, and I went ahead and said it in case he wasn't gonna say it. So, with that in mind, I will say, on that same vein, we also have a condition for sidewalks and connecting to the Greenway Trail. Ultimately, you've got the loops at Lover's Lane, you've got the soccer fields. You know, there's a lot of stuff in that area recreationally that we intend to make sure the occupants of these buildings can enjoy in addition to that campground, or not campground, but grills and playground. I'm gonna save the traffic for last, okay? Just because I don't want, because I know we're gonna talk about traffic, and I'm gonna talk about the chronology of this and where we're at, and I'm gonna have a little different opinion than staff has. But before we do that, I don't want to gloss over some other things. This property sits in the overlay district. And because of that, this is mentioned in the staff, we don't do a lot of discussion in these DPCs about building facades and materials, and that's because that overlay district that this property sits in is probably the most stringent district in our whole county, okay? It says what these buildings could be made out of, and it is the highest of the highest, all right? I know that's mentioned in the staff report, but I want to make sure that's accentuated here. Secondly, we do have a DPC that this will be singularly owned and managed. And I always think that's important in multifamily developments to point out. Of course, it's flume compliant, that's why we're here, that this is a little bit different flume, because it's the overlay flume, which this property is designated in the flume as townhouse or commercial. It's currently partial commercial and, I don't have it written down here. I know it's partial HB, forget what the other part, the other part is. Ag, so it's the original zoning, the other part. Now, those are, I think, all important, to know from a quality standpoint what my clients, the Pendleton, the Brothers Pendleton, as I call them, are asking to build out there. The issue in this report is certainly the traffic study slash state requirements. And what the staff has noted is that these two policies are out of compliance, because we didn't agree to do what the staff, what the state required. That's what the state would say. But I want, this is a little different, so I want you to look in your report to page. But I want, this is a little different, so I want you to look in your report to page 3 of 53. So I'm not sure who has the longest tenure on the Commission. Probably Mr. Warren, I'm guessing, but I'm not positive of that. But for those of you with less time on the Commission, you have become very accustomed to an exception to a rule. The rule that is set out in Section 3.1.4 of the Zoning Ordinance requires in A, every development basically is of a certain intensity, okay? And it's set out in the ordinance which one of these would be. But if a development triggers a traffic study, a traffic study shall be submitted. That is the rule in the ordinance. Those of you that haven't, you know, that are relatively new, haven't seen that very much. What you've seen as the exception is in B. The exception to the rule is, is if every traffic authority that basically is concerned or touches the project says, "We want you to do A, B, or C", and you agree to do A, B, or C, you are exempted from the traffic study. We've gotten very accustomed to the exception, and we've gotten very accustomed to doing whatever those authorities said, right? That doesn't mean that's what's required under A. So I want you to take a look at A and see what the ordinance says. If you do a traffic study, the Commission is to analyze, and I'm going to quote here, "The effect of the proposed project on the surrounding roadways and intersections. Such effects shall be measured against the existing level of service standard and circulation patterns for the roadways affected by the proposed development's impact." Now, let me try to put that in English. What your ordinance says is, if a traffic study is indicated, you are to consider what that study says about what the proposed development would do to the existing service standard. Y'all haven't seen traffic, that I know of. I know I'm not here on every application, I'm not here on every night. But I don't think you've seen probably many traffic studies in the last few years. This one has been presented to you. And what's important for y'all to know is, it's just like when you were in elementary school. How good a roadway, the standard of that roadway, how it's operating, is judged A to F. And so back in the days when we would do this often, you would have a traffic study, and it would say the roadway is operating at a B. But the development, if it's done, is going to make it a C. And the traffic study would then say, "Here's what you need to do to keep it a B, to minimize your impact. Here's what you need to do to keep from lowering the standard how the road is operating." Okay? I hope I'm not losing you all. Because here's what happened in this case. As we've become accustomed to, we presented this at a CDR meeting to the transportation authorities. The state, or, excuse me, the city said what they wanted, the county said what they wanted. We did those, we agreed to those things. We submitted the application. State hadn't spoken yet. Then the state spoke up and said, "We want a traffic study." The state said, "We are not willing to waive the traffic study. There is nothing you can agree to that will keep us from demanding a traffic study." So that's what we did. The traffic study comes back, and it says, this is the most important part of the traffic study, that this intersection, because this is what we're talking about. They've agreed to widen Mount Victor, they've agreed to widen Old Lover's Lane. The issue we have is the left turn in, yes, Commissioner Warren, that is the issue, okay? And what the traffic study says, you can, you can, first of all, it says that intersection is an F today. If you build this apartment development, it's still going to be an F. So what I want to point out to you is, the traffic study says that we will not lower the service standard, in the words of the zoning ordinance. We won't do that. I'll just submit to you, what is going on here is the state has asked us to carry their water for them. And the reason why I can say that with such certainty is if you go to the back of the staff report, it's page 51 of 53. This is an email from Mr. Plunk. I'm not sure of exactly his title, but my understanding is he is basically in charge of our region or division out on Morgantown Road for the cabinet, Transportation Cabinet. He's, so with this email from him on last week, on the 7th, is, "My clients, trying to work this out, reached out to Mr. Plunk and said, 'We're willing to do one of these five options Rachel talked about.' That option being a widening of Lover's Lane in this area, moving utilities, widening the road to lengthen the left turn end to create more stacking. It gets very complicated." But that was one of the five options that the Cannon and Cannon said could be done to alleviate not what we're going to cause, but what the problem already is. This email is Mr. Plunk's response. And his response, if I can summarize it, is, "No, I won't agree to Option 3. The state won't agree to that because the area is already a problem, number one. And number two, we're going to take out the left turn sooner or later anyways." What I would implore y'all to recognize is, that has nothing to do with my clients at all. They are truly stuck between a rock and a hard place here. And the disagreement I would have with staff is, I believe those two traffic policies are met here. And the reason they're met is the traffic study you have in front of you says that this development will not impact the service standard of the transportation roadways out there. And there's no one here to say different. I kind of thought Joe, Mr. Plunk, would be here tonight. He's not. So thankfully, the staff has included these emails. The next page, or two more pages, is a picture he sent us. This is a steel frame from Mr. Plunk, that Mr. Plunk took in his, in his car in August of this year. What his email references with regard to this picture is that, this is Mr. Plunk saying, "I already know that intersection is a failure. It doesn't work the way it is." In his words, "Sooner or later, they're going to change it." And I would ask rhetorically, what does that have to do with the Pendletons? Now, trying to be a good neighbor, the other thing that's happened here, and Mr. Plunk's email speaks to it, they reached out to Houchins Industries when they got this traffic study. Because obviously, all this has an impact, or at least they would be interested in this. And my clients want to work with them, and are still, and they intend to work with them. And so Houchins was okay, as I understand, with the option, this third option. But Mr. Plunk has vetoed that. So if, if the reason that we're out of compliance is because we haven't satisfied the state, I would submit to you, we need to revise the ordinance. Because that's not what the policy reads. The policy says, you either provide a traffic impact study that indicates how you will affect the service standard, or you do what they want you to do. In this case, we did the first. We tried to do the latter, they said, "No, we want a traffic impact study." We got it. The traffic impact study says we will not affect the service standard. And I don't think Mr. Plunk or the state would really disagree with that. As he has wrote in his own email, "It's already a failure." So sometimes developers come here with a chagrin because they think that you all are requiring them to make traffic improvements that will benefit later developers. You all have heard that before. Why do I have to fix that road when all these other people are going to come in here later and develop property, they don't have to fix it? I want you all to understand, that's not what's going on here. This is a demand that's being made to fix a problem that already exists, not that will exist in the future. And according to your ordinance, you are not required to address that as a developer. You only are required to address it if you are negatively taking down the service standard. That is the most uninteresting discussion I've ever had in front of you all. I recognize that. To say that that was deep in the weeds would be an understatement, but it's, I think it's extremely important here to understand what's going on. And I cannot impress enough the lengths that my clients have gone to to try to address this with the state. These, these traffic studies are not on the cheap. They were required to do it, and they did it.
So my question, and maybe it's the staff, say, "We pass this tonight. I mean, I think the development is nice and fine and all that, and we pass this tonight. Do they still have to deal with Plunk and the state? And, I mean, is that something that's still an issue?"
I'll give you my opinion, if you want it, Mr. Volker.
I think he asked the staff.
Yeah, let me ask the staff that.
In this particular case, no. So this is where the input point would be for KYTC on this. So let me step back and address some of the things that Mr. Davenport, his, and maybe talk about the disagreement of the interpretation of the ordinance. So as mentioned earlier, in an earlier case, that we are not traffic experts here. And that is absolutely the case. And if you look on page three, the Section 3.1.4 that Mr. Davenport referenced, nowhere in that Point A does it say the Planning Commission analyzes the traffic impact study. It does not say that. It says that a traffic impact study may be required, or it could be required. Any development requiring the submission of traffic impact study, which we agree that it was in this case, as identified by Bowling Green Public Works, Warren County Public Works, or the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet. And they shall analyze that traffic impact, traffic report, traffic impact study. And then they provide the comments to this commission, which we incorporated into our staff report. So I want to make that clear, in this case, the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet reviewed that traffic impact study, paid for by the developer, by their consultant, and did not agree with it. And so they are saying that with the addition of these apartments, yes, the level of service is F, but in this case, you're accelerating the further degradation of that level of service. I don't know if you want to call it an F minus, even though there is no such thing, and I know that's the first thing Chris is going to say, an F is an F. But you're still adding to that negative impact. So that is why they requested this. It has been a long discussion. The applicants have worked very hard to try to come to some agreement. But ultimately, that is the response from Mr. Plunk, that the addition of this apartment at this time will require those improvements, and that's what we would like to see. Now, what makes it a little more difficult, even so, is just what Mr. Volker said, that they, since there would be no permit to apply for on the state road because this doesn't directly connect to that state highway, that there would be no stopping permit point at that point. Now, what can happen is, if there is a plat done later, then KYTC cannot sign that plat. But I do not remember if there's a proposed subdivision of land with this or not. So that's kind of where we're at with that from the staff perspective.
And my issue with it is, it's a problem, it's been a problem. You know, if the state wants to do something about it, they should do something. I mean, the state recognizes it's a problem. So if the state recognizes it's a problem, whether they do their development or not, is, that's the state's issue.
So I'll agree with what Christian just said, but I'm going to take a slightly different stance. I hate it that you and your client are in this position. But every Thursday night, I sit here and listen to people concerned about traffic. Here, we have a traffic impact study. And what we're being asked to do is not follow the traffic impact study. I can't sign on.
One clarification, what you're being asked to do is follow the recommendation of the traffic impact study.
We're being asked by the applicant to not follow it, though.
No, correct me if I'm wrong, but you're being asked to follow the traffic impact study in which KYTC doesn't agree with.
The city and the county have said. The city and the county are fine with this. If I heard and read correctly, I mean, the city and the county don't have a problem with what the applicant wants to do. It's the state that has the problem, and so, is that fair, Rachel?
Well, maybe we should look at page 19.
Yeah, I need real clarity here, because this is a sticking point for me.
So, on page 19, we've included directly from the traffic impact study the conclusions and recommendations.
Page 19?
Yes.
All right.
And at the bottom of the second paragraph, it says, "A number of potential improvements are offered here that will provide varying degrees of mitigation to this issue", talking about the intersection that we were just discussing. So the traffic impact study outlined five options. Again, varying degrees of mitigation. So after the transportation agencies reviewed the study, it's my understanding that Option 3 was discussed, that's listed on page 19, but that the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet said they did not, they were not in favor of Option 3.
Hey, let me restate that.
And so there are other options to consider.
But the county and the city are fine with Option 3?
No, that was never stated either.
City and the county are fine with none of these.
For the widening.
Okay, okay.
They don't need any of these.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
So I want to restate this in possibly terms that Tim could understand. A traffic impact study was done. The traffic impact study made recommendations. Government entities reviewed those recommendations. And one of those government entities said, "We don't agree with the traffic impact study. We don't agree with the recommendations in the traffic impact study."
Well, they didn't support Option 3. So on page 19, the traffic impact study didn't say, "This is the one improvement that you have to make that will minimize the impacts of this development." There were several options that the transportation agencies could consider.
So they said, "We would like you to do 1, 2, or 4."
Let's see, I can't remember.
Or 5?
They said 1 or 2.
Pardon me?
They said 1 or 2. If you look at the email, and I don't mean to step on Rachel, but that's what they said in their email from Mr. Plunk.
All right.
That's what the state said.
They would sign off on 1 or 2.
Correct.
Okay, so the traffic impact study said, and this is, I need to be really clear here. The traffic impact study said, "Do any of these, 1 through 5, and we're satisfied," correct?
Well, and it also says, though, that of the five options, they offer varying degrees of mitigation. Meaning, one may not, may not fix it completely. It may just lessen the impact. So there are different degrees of mitigation in each of the options.
So who decides which of these is the acceptable method? Because we've got, we've got five prescriptive methods. Yeah, but, and so, Hamp, I appreciate that, but I'm not a traffic expert. I am accustomed to deferring to the experts here, and now I've got ambiguity.
Well, but, I mean, I guess mine is, if the city and the county are saying, "You don't have to do any of this, and we're okay with it."
But I thought they just said the city and the county didn't say that.
So I guess the options on page 19 are really not directly related to a city or county-maintained road or intersection. These options are directly related to the intersection at Mount Victor Lane and Cemetery Road, which is a state focus, because Cemetery Road is a state road.
Which is a problem no matter what. Is that fair to say, Rachel?
So, yes, Mr. Plunk did recognize that there's an existing issue. But I will also say that in Section 3.1.4, as Chris had mentioned, "The traffic impact study shall analyze the effect of the project on surrounding roadways and intersections." effect of the project on surrounding roadways and intersections. Such effect shall be measured against the existing level of service," which we discussed, "but in addition to that, also circulation patterns for the roadways affected by the proposed development's impact." So the transportation agencies, when they receive the traffic impact study, can analyze the effect of the development with both the level of service, that, that would be the grade A, B, C, D, E, F, or the circulation patterns. So when the transportation agencies review the traffic impact study, when they review these options for mitigation, they're, we're then deferring to them and their professional expertise to determine which option is the most appropriate for the development and for the community.
At the risk of oversimplifying this, I want to once again restate that in terms that, that maybe I can understand. So we have a traffic impact study that's done. That traffic impact study is submitted to some government entities. Those government entity, entities are asked to look at the impact study and tell us which ones you would embrace, which ones you would approve of, correct? Am I, am I good so far?
Yes.
And those government entities, um, one of those government entities has said, "We want to narrow the scope to one or two." Is that correct?
Yes.
And the applicant doesn't agree with one or two, clearly, right?
Yes.
And, um, so, once again, at the, at the risk of me being the interpreter of what is acceptable in regard to traffic, how are we to, how are we to interpret what has happened here? Because you have a traffic impact study, you submitted it to the, to the government entities, and they narrowed the scope, and they didn't approve. Now what? You either have to do one or two, or what?
Well, question though, but is it the state really that has the overall say? I mean, the city and county even have a vote, or did it even matter what they, that they're okay with all of this and the state isn't?
Well, I guess the issue here, and I, I briefly mentioned it earlier, is that we have Old Lovers Lane, which is partially maintained by the city and partially maintained by the county, because of where the corporate limits run. So it's split. And then Mount Victor Lane is also a city road. And then we get to the intersection of Mount Victor Lane at Cemetery, or, sorry, at Lovers Lane, and that then becomes KYTC jurisdiction. So we have three different agencies that have been involved in this review. So Bowling Green Public Works and Warren County Public Works, well, Warren County Public Works for sure is not concerned necessarily with the intersection at Mount Victor and Cemetery Road, because they don't maintain that intersection. They don't have any, any say, I guess, in what goes on at that intersection. Now, Bowling Green Public Works, since Mount Victor Lane ties into Lovers Lane, they have reviewed this, and they're saying they're not requiring any improvements necessarily for Mount Victor, other than the road widening that was mentioned. So then that leaves us with just the intersection and, I guess, the current conditions on Lovers Lane that Mr. Plunk has referenced in his email. So really, the only agency that can weigh in at that intersection, at least for the traffic issue on Lovers Lane itself, is KYTC, because it's a state-maintained road.
So the other two entities haven't, they've agreed to the part that, that they are affected by, but they are not affected by the intersection. And the only entity that's affected by the intersection is the state, and they have disagreed. Is that correct?
Yes. Yes. So I think the issue is that there were five options that could provide some sort of mitigation. The applicants said that they were agreeable to option three, but the state said, "We don't support that option. We support option one or two." And so here we are, where the two parties have not agreed on an option for mitigating the current issue at the intersection.
Let me ask, let me ask staff one last question. And I'm going to summarize what I think I know so far. What I think I know so far is a traffic impact study was done. We had this strange circumstance where we had multiple entities that had an interest in this development. Some of those entities said, "I agree. Everything's fine for the part that I'm looking at." Other entities, one in particular, said, "I'm not in agreement. You're going to have to narrow the scope to one or two for me to, for me to sign off on this." And, and that one was the state and Mr. Plunk. In the email that I'm looking at on page 51 of 53, I underlined, "Even if you do not go through with the rezoning, KYTC will eventually have to eliminate the left turn lane." How are we to weigh that?
Just like you're doing, and I, I don't know how else to explain it. I think we've heard a couple of different angles on that perspective. When it comes down to evaluating that, each of you are going to have to decide how much weight you're going to put on that in your decision versus all of the other good things that this development would, could bring to the community. You know, it goes back to, you know, the policies in, in compliance and not in compliance. At some point, you have to weigh that and, and see. So I don't know how else to add to that comment other than that. You got?
I mean, I think, I think, my opinion is, you put option three into the bonding elements, it's going to improve. It obviously was written in the traffic study as one of the things that could help, and we put option three in, and go that route.
What do we do with, what do we do with Kentucky's position that they, they don't approve it unless they're, unless the turn lane is, is addressed?
Go back to 35,000 feet.
All right.
The zoning ordinance says that if you have a particularly intense use, you're required to get a traffic impact study. It does not say that that TIS needs to be reviewed by the city, the county, or the state.
Interesting.
It simply says you all are to consider it as one of the factors you think about in deciding whether or not this development's consistent with the comprehensive plan. So, so the only time anyone asks the city, the county, or the state to, to interpret the ta- traffic impact study is a way to get a waiver, which ha- hasn't happened here.
A hundred percent agree with that. I think it's, you just have that option, and it's requi- either required by one of those three entities in this case, or there's improvements agreed upon, so you don't have to do a traffic impact study. And so then, but then if you do, then the one, those three entities do, do analyze that, review it, and doesn't mean they have automatic agreement with it.
Or does it mean they have a veto on the application?
Correct, but it-
That's the important, that's where I'm trying to get to.
They, 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 I mean, just because the traffic study's done, and whatever the content of it doesn't, doesn't say, well, you read it, you, there's no way to pass it. I mean, it's still, I mean, we've got three entities, you know, that are, that have reviewed the traffic study, and two of the three entities has said, "I'm okay with what it is," and the third entity has said, "We know it's a problem, and we'll have to deal with it at some point."
But I think, Christian, going back to Hamp's comment, if this were approved tonight, and it was submitted for everybody to sign off on it, Kentucky not going to sign off.
But I don't think it stops it from developing it.
Doesn't.
I think that's the, yeah, that's the thing. I don't think they have to have it signed off by the Kentucky Transportation. Is that fair, Hamp? Ben?
Now, Ben's talked about that just a little bit. There, there's a plat that they may be asked to sign, but, but this particular plat's way-
I mean, it even, it doesn't even touch there. I mean, so, so I don't think they have to, if they don't want to sign it, don't sign it. But it doesn't stop the development from getting building permits and building it.
So, so I'm sorry to, to try to oversimplify this, but I, I, it's important that I understand. We have this traffic impact study, and we, we have one entity that says the portion of the road that we are concerned with, we disagree, and we want option one or two. What is the purpose of sending this information to that entity if we don't comply?
Have to ask, ask them, I would assume. Go ahead.
Well, and I think, and I don't know, maybe I shouldn't say this, but it would seem to me, and this is my own opinion, that it would, kind of what you're alluding to is that why would you submit a traffic impact study only to not follow what the recommendations are? Because that's the purpose of the study, to evaluate the impact of the proposed development on the roadways in our community, and find out through that study what mitigation may be necessary in order to minimize the impact of the development. And so I think we've-
I'm sorry, go, I'm sorry.
And so I think the, the tough thing here is that in other traffic impact studies, and like Chris said, we don't have them submitted often, but in other scenarios, there have been clear recommendations that say, "You shall do X, Y, and Z, period." I don't think it's common that we have, there are five options you can sit, could consider with varying degrees of mitigation. So I, that's, that's further muddying the waters.
And I agree, I agree if the applicant said, "I'm not going to do any of them." But they have agreed to do one of the options.
So, so I'm not, I don't, I certainly don't want to argue Chris's point. He's been really patient to sit here and listen to this discussion. But here's what I think I understand. Because of the way this thing is positioned, this traffic impact study didn't have to go to just one entity, and they say, "We're okay with it," because that entity only looks at this part of the street that's in my jurisdiction. The traffic impact study, however, handles this jurisdiction, this jurisdiction, and this jurisdiction. The recommendation is, these two say, "The part of this thing that affects me, that's in front of my portion of this development, I like it." This one over here, however, has said, "No, I don't, because I'm the state, and this portion of it affects the state, and I disagree." That's my understanding. Is my understanding correct?
Yes, and I think on page 51 in the email, Joe, or Mr. Plunk, he explains why he's not in support of option three, because he stated in his email that it merely buys everyone a little time and at a great cost. So he's trying to state why he's not in support of that option, again, going back to the different recommendations of, you know, varying degrees of mitigation. So option three, while it may provide short-term mitigation, long-term is not going to be of benefit. At least, that's what I'm gathering from his email.
But he also says, but he also says, "At some point, they're going to have to deal with it anyways." So, so in my opinion, it does, it does do something, because it is dealing with a short-term problem until the state decides they want to stand up and deal with it. And we all know it's a problem. I mean, anybody that drives over there built it. The state.
Exactly.
I mean, so, 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 I mean, so it does buy, I mean, it, it, I, I don't know what the expense is, but if they're willing to spend it, and it does buy some time until the state says, "Hey, here's what we're going to do."
And so I, this part I agree with. So here's my decision. I, I, what I think I hear is one of these entities says, "We disagree." But interestingly, that same entity in an email on page 51 says, "Even if you don't go through with this, we're going to have to eliminate the turn lane." In my view, that's a recognition that they already have something that they are going to deal with and that they have to deal with, but if you would deal with it for us, we would be happy to accept that.
That's what, that, my comment was, they want us to carry their water.
Okay. I'm sorry that it's taken me so long to get here. This is a, this is an important thing, because we hear these concerns about traffic all the time, and the last thing I want to do is gloss over that, but it was important for me to understand that. I don't think I have any other questions.
There, you know, there's two points I'd like to make following that conversation.
Chris, make them short.
I will, yes, sir.
Well, no, I'm not, not disrespecting-
I completely agree. Oftentimes, you've had applications in front of this board, Nashville Road over the years, recently, where there's impacts on Nashville Road. And the state says, "We're not asking for a traffic study, and we're not asking for you to make any improvements, because we know we're getting ready to make improvements." Think how many times y'all have heard that? And those anticipated improvements will accommodate the, that's the same situation here. And it's in this email, Commissioner Graham, what you have underlined and read.
I think what you're seeing, Chris, they, they're, they know, they recognize it's a problem. They're not saying they're going to correct it anytime soon.
Well, his email says, "We eventually have to eliminate the left turn."
Eventually, it could be 10 years.
That's up to them. But according to Mr. Plunk, it's been a problem since day one, to Mr. Moore's point. The second thing I'll say is, and very brief, and it's a matter of law, I want to make sure it's on the record, the, the Transportation Cabinet does not have a veto, because there's no ordinance or standard for them to apply a veto. If this body recognizes them as having a veto power, that becomes what Mr. Moore and I would recognize, I believe, as arbitrary. Mr. Plunk cannot just arbitrarily say what gets passed and what does not get passed. And that's my issue with how, really how this has been handled. Not from this board, not from this staff, but by outside agencies. Thank you all.
Thank you for your comments, Chris, and staff, and commissioners. Is there anyone in the audience tonight that would like to make a comment or opposition to this, or an opinion? All right, hearing none, we call for them. Would you come up to the microphone, please, sir?
I don't, I don't live in that area, but my church is in that area.
Okay, would you state your name?
My name's Carl V. Fishburne.
All right, Mr. Fishburne, your address?
My address is 1171 Freeport Road in Oakland, but I'm-
You swear to tell the truth?
Yes, I do. Our church address is 226 Old Lovers Lane. Uh, my concern is with all these options, you get, I'm just getting twisted trying to understand what they are proposing that they were, the option that they were going to do. I know one was taking and widening the road a certain part of Old Lovers Lane and Mount Victor. Is that going to affect where my church is at? Be my concern, so.
And where, help us understand, where is your church located?
It's on Old Lovers Lane, 226 Old Lovers Lane, and our parsonage is 2, 236 Old Lovers Lane. We're a little bit off of Mount Victor as you come in there.
So as we turn in Mount Victor, there between the Junior Food, or the-
Where it used to be the Junior Food, you would take a left, we're down there on the right.
Okay, I know where it's at.
On the, on the left, yeah.
Okay, very good.
Yeah. Nazare, it used to be the Nazarene Church.
Okay. So your question, what's, it's, could you state it again, please?
I'm, I'm concerned about the option, if, if, whatever option that they're proposing that they were going to do, the developers, is it the 24 feet where the widening is going to take place? Because I don't, our church doesn't have a whole lot of property out there by the road. It's going to take, is it going to take land from where we're at our point, or is it going to take land down toward the end of the road where the other apartments are? Okay.
Oh, it's my understanding that the right-of-way now for Old Lovers Lane is 50 feet, and so the roadway would be widened within the current public right-of-way. It wouldn't impact the private property of the church.
Does that address your question, sir?
Yeah, that addresses one of them. And then, I, I'm just concerned about the back part of where our property line runs for the church, for the develop, development. Would it, I know where we got to be within like, what, 10 feet? You said, if another structure from earlier discussions, I've sat through several to get, wait to get to this one.
Sure, no. So actually, this is in a different area. There's a, different restrictions that apply, based on the zone, or in this case, there's an overlay district. So there's a more restrictive setback. It's 20 feet. And then there's also a landscape buffer that would be required by ordinance.
And would that be what we had heard before through the other ones with the trees coming up and?
Yeah, there's a different planting requirement. Let me see.
Oh, no.
Right, it would be on their property.
Yeah, I, I, I figured that.
I just don't remember the number of trees, uh, sitting here somewhere.
So, so let me put it in layperson's terms. It would be a similar visual screening, because of course, that's the purpose, so that you're not looking straight into that development. It won't be when they're first planted, but as they mature, you're going to have a visual screen there.
And we're looking at 144, is that correct? So occupancy of a townhouse, how many families we would be? So occupancy of a townhouse, how many families we would be looking at there?
There are a hundred and forty-four, one bedrooms.
A hundred and forty-four units, so.
Yes, sir, they're one-bedroom units.
One bedroom, okay, okay, I wasn't sure.
Yes, sir.
I couldn't, I didn't get all the information, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to represent on behalf of what, uh, we're doing, and, uh, we're concerned about the traffic there. It's, it is, it, I agree, it is bad there. I don't know why they wouldn't put a light out by the school on the other end of Old Lover's Lane, though. I don't understand that part of it, where you could have some lights there, where it'd be spread apart, not toward the interstate part, but, uh, uh, I'm, I'm not a traffic analyst, but I am concerned for my congregation.
Clearly nor are we.
I am concerned for my congregation trying to get out when other people going to the store and trying to get out of that area. I know the road she did say was wider than what I thought, appreciate knowing that's, those facts. But there was an email from somebody that was a neighbor, I was concerned about hearing about that. I did, I did hear you, hear you say, hear you say something about that.
The email that we received, there were concerns in the email regarding traffic, that, that was the main theme in the email.
I thought it would be along the same lines, yeah, okay, I just wanted to make sure.
And then I did find, for the landscaping, the number of plants, under the ordinance, it says that, uh, "All areas shall be planted at a rate of one shade tree, two evergreen trees, and ten shrubs for four hundred square feet of buffer provided," so that would basically be your, if I do the math, that'd be, uh... Every forty feet, you would have at least the, uh, one shade tree, two evergreens, and ten shrubs.
Okay.
Does that answer your question, sir?
That answers a lot of them, uh-
Okay, well, you, we're about out of three minutes, but-
Yeah, I don't wanna, I didn't want to overrun, uh, but I just want to express my concern as a pastor for my congregation and with the traffic. I, I, I feel bad for y'all with all the options, I don't understand why there would be so many options, uh, just, it doesn't make any sense, so.
So thank you, well, thank you very much.
All right, thank you, appreciate you letting me have some time to talk, thank you.
Okay, commissioners, we've heard the public discussion, I would call for a motion, please.
Make the motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment, together with and condition upon the general development document, number two, two zero two one seven one ZBG, based on the testimony and documents presented at the public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus 2030 comprehensive plan, as demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further, I request this motion includes the summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at the public hearing.
Second.
Mr. Volker?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Drane?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Roncell?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Warren?
Yes, ma'am, the motion passes, and we'll go, uh, to the Bowling Green City Commission. Thank you all for your time tonight. Our last item tonight, uh, on our docket is, um, James W. and Rodney T. Doolin and New Singular Wireless PSC LLC doing business as AT&amp;T Mobility and Vertical Bridge Development have filed an application for approval of a wireless communication tower located a portion and tract of land at thirty-two eighty-five Pin's Chapel Road. This property is zoned ag, and then if this approved, they have applied for a variance from the minimum setback of a thousand feet from a residential district structure or use, and a variance from a minimum setback of sixty percent of the tower height along southwest property line on a portion of tract of land, uh, located at thirty-two eighty-five Pin's Chapel Road. The property is zoned ag. Rachel?
All right, thank you, Chair Warren, last one of the evening, and I will try to be brief, uh, but at least cover all the, the, the good stuff. We've had a, an influx of cell tower applications at the end of the year, so I think you all are by now familiar with the, the cell tower application requests and what, what is involved with that type of application. So typically, the staff is just evaluating the application to see if it complies with the minimum zoning ordinance requirements, as far as things like setbacks and preservation of vegetation that all of the FAA requirements are met, and things of that nature, so, uh, I guess just to summarize, the applicants do comply with all items that are required under the specific use standards in section five-two-six E-five, with the exception of the setback from the nearest residential structure and the setback from the nearest property line. And so they have requested variances to relieve them of those two setback requirements. Those are outlined on page, uh, number five. There actually is a typo, so I will note that, under the zoning ordinance reference on page five, the applicants are requesting a variance of four hundred and thirty-one feet from the minimum setback of one thousand feet, and let me jump to the site plan here. And so you can see on the site plan, they're calling out the, the distance to the nearest residential structure, which is up here along Pin's Chapel Road, so the, the setback from the nearest residence that they're proposing, um, would be seven hundred and four feet. I believe the staff report says five hundred and sixty-nine, but the proposed setback, if the variance was granted, would be seven hundred and four feet from the nearest residence. Now, there's also a setback requirement for the overall height of the tower, uh, from the property line itself, so if you, uh, kind of zoom in or focus on this area here, there is a variance requested to address the, what would typically be a one hundred and nineteen point four feet setback, uh, they are requesting a variance of eighty-nine feet to locate the tower closer to the property line. So those are the two requirements they don't comply with, but if the variances are approved, then the proposed tower application would comply with all zoning ordinance requirements. Uh, the only other items I will point out for your review in the staff report would be our Focus 2030 category items. We found that they complied with the two items relating to preservation of existing vegetation, and also, uh, there, there are two items, CF nine and CF nine point one. The planning commission should determine if the tower will advance telecommunications and wireless infrastructure in Warren County, and if it complies with those two items. Uh, I think the only other thing you may want to look at is on page five, and that is the section of the ordinance that encourages co-location, and so, uh, they have provided, uh, in the italicized text there, uh, kind of, uh, the justification for their site selection, and they are proposing to allow, uh, if we go to the tower elevation here, there are multiple options for other carriers to co-locate on the proposed structure, so we, we did feel that the application complied with that particular section of the ordinance. Uh, we do have the variance findings for your reference at the bottom of page five. The applicants supplied the narrative on page six to help and address those variances, um, and those specific findings, as outlined in Charis one hundred two four three. But other than that, I, I know we've had a long evening, I'll be happy to go through any of the sections of the staff report in greater detail if you feel that that is necessary, uh, but I think that is really all I have, again, it would meet the requirements of the ordinance if the variances are granted, and otherwise, uh, we found that it was consistent with the other sections of the ordinance. I think that's all I have, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Rachel. Commissioners, any questions for Ms. Hurd?
So Rachel, I think the only question here is the variance, is the, uh, is the, um, property owner the one who's affected by this variance?
Yes, so if we go back to the... Oh, actually, no, it's not. It's, uh, on a different piece of property. I stand corrected. The, at least there, it's a separate tract, uh, let me look at the owner on the, uh... On the variance exhibit here. Well, it's not linked. I may let the applicant address that. I honestly don't know. I was, I, I was thinking it was coming off the, the parent tract with the house, but it looks like that is in fact a separate parcel of land, at least by deed, um, but the applicant may be able to, to address if the same owner of this land is who resides in that residence.
Other questions?
Thank you, Rachel. Hey, well, are there any other questions for Rachel, for, um, and you're the applicant, would you please state your name, sir, and address?
Todd Briggs, ten-two-hundred Forest Green Boulevard, uh, Suite one-twelve Louisville, Kentucky. I swear to tell the truth.
Thank you, sir.
Um, it's been a long night, I know you've all had a long week, so I will forego a presentation and just open up the questions that you may have on the application itself.
My only question is, is the, the variance, uh, is, uh, who, who is affected by the variance?
Well, the, the, the one thousand-foot setback variance, the residence that's in question is not on the subject parcel.
That property owner here, present tonight? Okay.
I have not received any, uh, comments from any of the certified letters, or the signs that were posted, or the, the notice that went in the newspapers, so.
And I guess I can back that up and say our staff hasn't received a call from anyone who lives in that residence, unless, I haven't personally, and have any of you talked to anyone?
I think he's, I think he's sitting in the audience. Okay. Okay, we'll, we'll get to you in just, just a second, thank you, sir. Uh, any, any other questions for the applicant regarding this cell tower and the variances?
So, so if I understand correctly, the, the house that's, that is affected by the variance would be the house up in the left corner there, and that part, that individual is not here tonight? Okay.
So, so let's just ask the obvious question, uh, you, you clearly didn't move all the way into the corner of the property, and I'm not sure that would have alleviated your need for the variance, but is there some geographical reason you selected this, this particular spot?
As far as the setback variance, yes. To be brief, this search area is very difficult from a topography standpoint, the elevation changes, uh, even on the subject parcel. We are located on the highest point of that parcel. One other thing that I want, did note, there has been submitted a, uh, engineering fall letter. This tower will be designed and manufactured, so if a catastrophic failure, it would fall in upon itself and be contained within a twenty-foot radius.
I remember that, and we've seen that before, so, so there's really not the danger of this falling outward, it'll fall, it kind of falls on-
Play, it won't fall at all, but yeah.
On top of itself, though, so to speak, is that correct?
Correct, yeah.
All right, thank you.
And Hamp, is it, uh, still a fair statement that if we are okay and we'll pass the variance, we really don't have a, we, we can't deny the cell tower? Okay, that's what I thought, okay.
Just the variance that we're having a discussion about, I think, but I mean, I think-
And the variance, or the setback requirements don't really have to collapse with circles, they have to do compatibility with the surrounding.
Sure. Okay.
All right, thank you, commissioners, thank you, sir, I know you want to get back to Louisville. Is there any opposition to this request or comments? Yes, sir, if you approach the microphone, please.
My name's Bobby Dodd, and I swear to God-
What's your address, Mr. Dodd?
Thirty-one eighty-four Pin's Chapel Road.
All right, you swear to tell the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, I get, if you can see my property, it's right across the street, and I guess I got two concerns, one's the, just the aesthetics, literally, it's like my front view would be a cellphone tower, I'm pretty sure anybody here really wouldn't want a cellphone tower for their view after breakfast, uh, window, bedroom window, kitchen window, I mean, it's literally dead, straight in front of my house. And the second is, uh, the property value, aspects of it.
And I'll, I'll go ahead and address the two things you probably don't want to hear, is-
I was gonna, I was waiting for somebody else to say it.
It is, we don't really have the ability not to pass a cellphone tower, and, and, and I, I understand, and I, and I sympathize with your, with your concerns, and one thing we don't take into account here, our property values, um, any things that-
And, and that one there, and I tend to, tend to stay there, so that's not as really as big as the aesthetics, uh, because I don't plan on moving, it's just-
I understand, I understand, and like I said, I hate-
Addressing the one thing that we can't do anything about.
I hate to be the one to, to say it, but it, 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 it really kind of gets out of our hands.
Cellphones are a special int, it's a special type of application, and, uh, we don't have the latitude with a cellphone tower that we have with other things, and, um-
They don't make two-hundred-foot trees or fences, we can-
Yeah, no, they don't.
But I do thank you for your service.
If we could, we would, we'd help you serve.
Thanks for your comments, sir, appreciate it, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, commissioners, we have, we will have a motion for the tire application, and then if that approves, we will, we will have a motion for the variance.
I make a motion to approve the proposed telecommunications tower application, docket number twenty-two-one oh-three TCO, based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing. Proposed telecommunications tower is consistent with the adopted Focus 2030 comprehensive plan, as demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed telecommunications tower is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further, I request this motion includes the summary of evidence and, and, uh, testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Roncell?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Drane?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Warren?
Yes, ma'am. Motion is approved, we'll call for a motion on the variance, please.
I make a motion to approve the request for a variance at three, uh, thirty-two eighty-five Pin's Chapel Road, docket number twenty-two-one V twenty-seven, a variance of two hundred ninety-six feet with the minimum setback of one thousand feet from a residential district structure or use, a variance of eighty-nine feet from the minimum setback of one hundred nineteen point four feet, sixty percent of the tel, cellphone tower. The testimony presented in the public hearing has shown that granting the variance will not adversely affect the public health, safety, or welfare, will not alter the essential character of the general vicinity, will not cause hazard or nuisance to the public, and will not allow an unreasonable circumvention of the requirement of the zoning regulations.
Second. Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Roncell?
Ma'am.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Drane?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Warren?
Yes, ma'am, the motion approved, and it's, uh, the, uh, zoning's final action on our part. You and you have been to spend, well, we thank you all for being here, I hope everybody has a enjoyable Christmas, and we will see everybody in the new year. Thank you very much. Thank you, sir.